Counselors, please take your seats. I'd like to call to order the May 3rd, 2018, meeting of the Barnstable Town Council. Please note that tonight's meeting is recorded and broadcast on Channel 18, and that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, I must inquire whether anyone is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Seeing none, please silence all devices. Madam Clerk, may we have the roll call?
Counselors, Beeden Bender, Crocker.
Present.
Cullum.
Here.
Dagewan.
Here.
Flores.
Here.
Rap Grissette.
Present.
Hebert.
Present.
Levek.
Present.
Neary.
Here.
Schnep.
Here.
Stein Hilber.
Here.
Tinsley.
Here.
Wallace.
Here.
Twelve.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, this is the time in the meeting for public comment, so if any members of the public wish to speak, please sign in, state your name, and limit your time to three minutes. Anyone? All right, I'll close public comment, and we'll skip counselor response, since there was no public comment. Town Manager Mark Els, we'll go right into Town Manager Communications.
Good evening, Mark Els, Town Manager. Thank you. This is my update for the period of September 27 through May 3, 2018. We're proceeding with the tasks in the Budget Action Calendar for fiscal 2019 as scheduled, in accordance with Section 6-2 of the Town Charter. We have submitted the printed copies of the town's FY 2019 operating budget to the Town Council, and have posted the said document on the town's website homepage, under notifications, FY 2019 operating budget booklet. Director of Finance and I will present a summary of the FY 2019 budget this evening, so you can go to our website and find all of that information. We continue working with the Mass. Department of Fish and Wildlife, USGS, Department of Environmental Protection, water supply staff regarding the future potential water supply wells proposed on the 250-acre parcel northeast of the Hyannis Water System. We submitted the modeling information scenarios to USGS yesterday, so that means they are proceeding now with the evaluation of modeling the potential future water supply wells, and looking at some of the very sensitive pond complex that exists out on that parcel of land. And this afternoon, DPW, USGS, Cape Cod Commission, and DEP officials were on-site of the fish and wildlife land, locating and clearing wells for the sampling. So we're actively proceeding with this. We are proceeding with the hiring process for the position of Chief of Police. I have provided you with the link to the results of the survey conducted relevant to the selection of the new police chief, and as I had said in the formulation of the questions that we asked at the first interview, we utilized that survey to make sure that there were questions in there that reflected what our public had indicated as some of the priorities, so you can take a look at that. If you'd like a summary of it at some point, I'd be more than happy to share that. I have conducted the second round of interviews of the candidates, and will proceed with a recommendation for a new chief shortly, and I'll keep you advised as I progress with that. I conducted those today. We continue our discussion with Vineyard Wind, relevant to their proposal to construct a transmission facility that would interconnect with the proposed offshore wind farm in federal waters. We met to review a host agreement, and have had subsequent discussions, that was last Friday, and have had subsequent discussions regarding said agreement, and we'll be sending them a draft shortly, we'll continue those discussions. In our continued effort to emphasize customer service in our organization, our staff has developed a customer service video to be used for training purposes. Please review the video, it's on the V drive, so if you have an opportunity while you're here, I'm sure Cynthia, if she has any trouble, we can help her find it for you all. I want to thank Elizabeth Harts Grove and the support of our Channel 18 staff for developing the video, and they've already used it with the Gateway greeters. We're gonna, if you watch it, it's certainly an effort in development, but we think it's important to have a regular communication with all staff, and certainly new staff, of the importance of customer service for us all. So it'll be a continued effort, but I'm very thankful to our staff for taking that initiative and helping me to develop that. Some sad news. The little leaf linden tree that's at the northeast corner of our school administration building, so if you walk out the front door, you look at the building, it's the tree that's right on that corner, right there on the green, the furthest corner on the green, has been found by the tree warden, an arborist, to be diseased, not structurally sound, and has significant risk of failure. He's recommended the removal of the tree as soon as possible, and there will be an appropriate replacement tree put in place. So I've told you, when we had to remove the tree over at the Centerville Playground, I try to let people know, because people become, we all become attached to trees, certainly, and, you know, when they're gone, if you don't know it's gonna be gone, it can be quite shocking, quite honestly. So we typically share that, especially with a tree that's, you know, we walk by it every day, for many of us, so just wanted to let you know that that will be upcoming. This is an update by David Anthony through me regarding the sale of the tax title properties. Want to make sure you're aware of what we're doing and what's coming next. There have been several meetings between the town staff and supporting attorneys assisting in this process. The bulk of the letters will be out to bidders, informing them of being the winning bidder or returning their deposits if they were not a winning bidder. For those who are viewing that don't know what I'm referring to, we had gone out to a request for proposal for the sale of tax title land, and so we are going through the process at this point of disposing of that property. The two major steps that are left are to sign into purchase and sales agreement, and then to bring back to the Town Council a disposal of those properties, which the Town Council will vote on. The decision was made to only keep the deposits for the highest accepted bids, however, we will reserve the right to contact the next highest bidder on the list if the first bidder fails to complete the transaction. These items are also being communicated back to those who proposed. The purchase and sale document template was updated between staff and the attorney. Copies of all bid files and submissions were provided to the attorneys for preparation of individual and specific purchase and sales documents. The goal is to have the PNS documents start going out for the winning bid review and signatures by the end of next week. Once the signed PNS is returned, closing dates can be scheduled. After the closing, all paperwork will be finalized and the transfer of record. We have had conservation with the assessor on how tax bills will be calculated, conversations, I'm sorry, with the assessor on how tax bills will be calculated and issued once the property transfer is complete and the property returns to a taxable status. Total bid, if every high bid closes, is $519,000, with approximately $11,000 per year of new taxes as the property's returned to taxable status. Eighteen transactions involving 22 parcels. One parcel received no bids, and will be examined to see if we want to put it back out in the future. The next set of properties to begin work on is coming up in the future, and we hope to move forward with, there's as many as 70 parcels remaining in this particular group of tax title properties. We hope to be moving forward with those shortly. Assistant Town Manager Andy Clyburn is here, who actually, from my office, led that effort, and he can answer any questions you may have. At this point, I'll conclude my update of the Town Council, and I will ask Elizabeth Jenkins to come up and provide an update of our housing development incentive program. I believe I was asked to do that by Town Council at our last meeting, but if you have any questions of what I presented, or the Assistant Town Manager, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Okay. Any questions for the Town Manager? Vice President Crocker?
We, thank you. Very impressive for a week's work, as usual. We talk about Vineyard Wind, and I need to try to develop a host agreement, but I don't think anybody really understands the magnitude of the items that we're trying to find and resolve, without tipping too much of a hand, because it is a negotiating issue. Is there some discussion that you can go into to describe what the process entails, and what we are trying to do to protect the citizens, if possible, through this process? And lastly, there's been some discussion that there is no chance that it's coming aground anywhere, but Yarmouth, could you let us know if there's any new direction in that regard as well?
Absolutely, and thank you for the question. In big picture, so this is a wind farm proposal to the southeast of Martha's Vineyard, and they will be looking to route cables, basically, we are the most easterly landing of where these grant areas might be. There are several of them vying for this opportunity to connect into the mainland grid. Cape Cod is the, I'm sorry, Barnstable and Yarmouth, and the interconnect from Vineyard Wind is the only Cape Cod landing that's being looked at. There are some others to the west, into the mainland. So at this point, the proposal has three points of landing for the cable, and those landings are in Yarmouth, in, at Koval's Beach, and into Hyannis Harbor area. And what has been communicated to us is that the way this has been submitted is the landing in Yarmouth is the primary landing. The other two are secondary, but secondary doesn't mean that if they only, in the first phase, if they land in Yarmouth, at some point, when the second phase comes, they'll be looking to one of the other two landings. So if they get the award, and the Yarmouth happens, at some point, if the second phase is authorized, they'll be looking to land in Barnstable. Assuming that they come through their first route, they will head west, a little bit south of the Mid-Cape, or perhaps a little bit north, they have a couple of, I think they may have three different routing scenarios that they're looking at, and they will connect into the station that is in Independence Park, south of the Mid-Cape Highway. If they come in through Koval's Beach, there's the potential that they may not go to that location, and they may go to the substation that's up on Oak Street. But that being a secondary choice, the primary focus is to route in through the east, through Yarmouth, turn west, and come into Barnstable. This has tax implications for us, because there's an asset being installed by a private company, and that's being looked at by our assessor at O'Neil. So when we get into a host agreement, what's involved is looking at the impacts that it'll have on our community, and what is a fair and equitable way to address those impacts. We've actually addressed two major impacts. One has a strong financial component, the other has a legal component, and basically, our concern is that nothing can, once they, if and when they lay the cable through the sound, vineyard sound, there can't be any interconnect by another potential group, and so there are lots of legal ramifications to that, but we're trying to make sure that there is language in this agreement that prevents that from occurring. Secondly, there are financial impacts, the very typical ones that you address are, you know, the roadways they impact, the beaches they impact, you know, wherever this routing goes within our community, and that's pretty standard. Upgrade of substations. One of the efforts that we have ongoing, much broader than just Vineyard Wind, is looking at substations. They contain oils, we sit on top of our aquifer, our drinking water, we're not like other places. We need to be mindful that when we have the opportunity to have these upgraded, at a minimum, their contained system, and at a maximum, we challenge them to look at innovative alternatives other than those oils and fluids that they house at the site, and could potentially get into the environment. Now, in a closed system, that's fine, as long as you don't have a catastrophe at that site, and if you did, it could go beyond the site and jeopardize groundwater. One of the major discussions in there is the protection of our public drinking water wells, based on which substation they're located at, so we've included in there also a financial component to assist in the relocation of public water supply wells. So that's primarily what we're looking at in the discussion. I think it's fairly a standard discussion, that not unlike, you know, I, many, many years ago, I was involved with the Nantucket Electric Host Agreement in managing that, and this one's a little bit different because of the drinking water component that we have, and the location of that substation, and the knowledge, quite honestly, that we have 25 years later about the potential impacts of these sorts of things. It's been a very collegial discussion, in my opinion. It's not adversarial. Some of the time is spent understanding why, and it was very helpful to have a large map to show, we didn't just have Barn, we had Yarmouth's wells, we had all the water district wells, and we very openly talked about where our drinking water comes from, and where this is routed, and where substations are, and I think it was very eye-opening to the fact that this potential concern is there. And they didn't shy away from it, they wanted to understand it, they wanted to understand the costs associated, and wanted to really, now I think, focus on, okay, what's, then what's our equitable share in this sort of host agreement to participate in that? So those are the discussions, that's about where we're at, at this point in our discussions.
And when will we be out of the host agreement negotiating realm? In some kind of a timeframe?
You know, I guess we'll sit back down, I think it'll be ongoing, unless they take another tact with this, and go out for a different process, which isn't one where they sit with us and talk about it, they pursue a comprehensive permit, where basically, they're just gonna do what the regulatory agencies that oversee them allow them to do, and then we'll be in a different position. Ultimately, they'll probably be in agreement that those regulatory agencies will require them to forge with us, but it'll be a much different relationship. We'll move as quickly as we can. I can't honestly tell you, it depends on, it depends on the back and forth that we have, but at any time, if, you know, details are appropriate to share with the council through an executive session, or whatever mechanism you believe appropriate, and, you know, town legal department advises, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Any other counselors? All right, thank you, Mark. And welcome, Elizabeth Jenkins, our Director of Planning and Development.
Planning and Development, thank you, Elizabeth Jenkins, Director of Planning and Development. A pleasure. Town Manager Els just asked me to give a very brief update on the status of our housing development incentive program application. As you recall, we applied to the State Department of Housing and Community Development for this incentive program, which provides an opportunity for developers looking to construct market rate rental housing development, to be able to access some incentives, both locally and through the state. The Town Council approved our application, we did submit it to DHCD, and our zone, our housing development, housing development zone was approved. We chose the downtown Hyannis growth incentive zone, a boundary contiguous to that, as our HDIP zone. We know from our housing needs assessment that incentivizing the production of this market rate housing in this area is so important. It's a gap that we have here in the town of Barnstable, especially in downtown Hyannis, and so important to our economic and workforce development. So our zone was approved, along with our plan to create the, to support the creation of housing in downtown Hyannis. So staff has been working on kind of the associated implementation of this program, and application, some guidelines, and a process through which a developer would have to go through to submit an application. So again, just as a reminder, they do have to apply locally for a, what we call a tax increment exemption from the town, that would, that would look at the increment of property taxes, being able to provide some tax relief there, and by giving that, they're able to access a larger funded, a larger tax, pool of tax credits through a fund that the state has. So we have those guidelines in place, and we do hope that they will be looked at by a subcommittee of the Town Council in the near future.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Are there any questions? Counsel Hebert?
Thank you, Elizabeth. Can I ask you this question? In the case that we would grant some tax relief, is that for our general fund, and does that adversely limit the Fire Department District from taxation? So the relief, the tax relief that would be available through this program would be on the additional property taxes that would be assessed as a result of the improvement that's made to the property. So when we say it's an increment exemption, that means, you know, if you're making a major investment in a property, and now we're able to assess an additional X number of dollars, it's only that piece of the puzzle that's able, that we're able to provide relief in. So it's really relief on new taxes that are coming through, so it's more revenue that we're not collecting right away versus, you know, versus revenue that's actually coming out of our pocket. So this is a great way, you know, for a developer that's bringing a project online, you know, especially for the market rate projects, you know, as they're, you know, as they're kind of figuring out their development pro forma, to be able to kind of close a gap in the beginning when it's tough to get those projects funded. So it's only available on the increment, and I'm sorry, I forgot your second question. Did that affect the Fire District? Fire District, so we only have the ability to offer relief on taxes that the town assessed. Through these, whether it's a TIF offered through our Economic Development Incentive Program, or this new Housing Development Incentive Program, only town taxes. We have no ability to say to the Fire District that they have to grant relief. They would have to apply separately to the Fire District through that program. Okay, and I do want to thank you and your department for the great work you're doing. My calculations say we're bringing, within the next two years, a lot, many millions of dollars into our tax base while providing housing for our people, and kudos to you and your department. I'm tremendously excited by the progress we're making. I think we look, as we did the growth incentive zone work over the last 10 years, maybe 120 units, I think we've done that, you know, in the last eight months, projects that are coming online, so it's an exciting time. Easily, you've done it. Thank you.
Counsel Schnep?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Elizabeth. At the time of the application, there were several projects or proposals that were laid out in the application. Are those, are any of those coming forward at this point in time, or are they waiting till you give the green light?
So we don't have any current applications. Certainly, we have the ability to accept applications, but we, and, you know, we do, we do, we have had some interest expressed by developers, but we haven't had any, any applications submitted to date.
And at the moment, do you foresee that you'll have a set percentage on the tax increment incentive, or will it be a sliding scale based on the project?
Again, I think that'll, you know, that'll certainly be up to the council and the associated subcommittee. You know, I think we feel pretty strongly that, at least in that first year, when we're looking at, you know, the ability to produce new growth dollars, that, you know, perhaps we might want to provide a lesser incentive in that first year, so it doesn't have the impact, again, on that tax base. Again, these are, you know, these are pretty small projects we're talking about, so I mean, the amount of relief that we're talking about is really pretty diminutinous when you look at the whole picture, but we think that's an important standard. But certainly, we have the ability to offer anywhere between, I'm sorry, I think it's 5% to 100%, and based on, it can be on a sliding scale, so, you know, we would want to evaluate that. Certainly, something, feedback we got from the state was that, you know, if the town offers one, and certainly, the more generous that we are, you know, I think the more, it shows support for the project, and perhaps, they might be willing to be more generous with the, with the state tax credits. So, you know, I think that's a calculus that we'll have to think about going forward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Elizabeth, thank you, and I just wanted to commend you and congratulate you on your recent 40 Under 40 Award recognition by the Cape and Plymouth Business Council. I think it speaks highly of the direction that the department is moving, speaks highly in terms of recognizing the need from everywhere, from affordable housing to market rate housing, and the approval processes and recommendations that you've been putting forward, so with that being said, it's been a long time since I was 40, but 40 Under 40 is critical. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're all disqualified up here. Any other counselors? Oh, great, thank you very much, and congratulations. All right, Vice President Crocker, could we please act on the minutes of April 26, 2018, please?
Yes, Mr. President, in our packets, we have the meeting minutes, Town Council meeting minutes of April 26, 2018, and I propose them as drafted.
I have a second. All those in favor of the Town Council meeting minutes of April 26, 2018? And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, we're gonna move into Counsel Communications, but I want to lead off with the presentation. We have Joint Base Cape Cod, and so I'd welcome folks up front here to give us our presentation, and I'll let you introduce everybody. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, counselors. My name's Brigadier General Frank McGurn, I'm Assistant Adjutant General Army for the Massachusetts National Guard, and in that capacity, I serve as the Executive Director of Joint Base Cape Cod, which means I'm in charge of one person, he's sitting over there, his name's Paul Rendon. Each of these commanders that you will hear from tonight serves a different master, has their own mission, has their own higher headquarters to answer to, but yet they collaborate in a very unique way through a body we call the Joint Oversight Group. It's basically a body much like this, where we hammer out the challenges, difficulties, and opportunities that arise on the base every single day, from safety, public safety, to operational concerns, DPW-type things. That is unique, I'm not sure if everyone knows that, but that is unique across the military, and it was recognized a couple of years ago, well, first, let me say, I have a couple of slides, but I know you're really busy tonight, so I'm giving you the elevator.
That's all right. If they want to come up and sit at the table up front here, come on up.
What I'd like to do, bring them up one by one, and they'll each touch on their piece of the base. But what I was going to allude to is, the Army's Chief of Staff for Installation Management recognized this, and we were awarded the Army Community Partnership Award last year. Camp Edwards, one of the entities on the base, was awarded. The prize wasn't money, but it was a team that came out to take our collaboration to the next level, to enhance it. We have agreements that go everywhere, from handshakes, and you scratch my back, and I'll scratch yours, to formal MOAs and monetary agreements, but in 2013, a new intergovernmental support agreement was authorized by Congress that allows us to take that collaboration out to municipalities and other state agencies. So we've embarked on a working group, Barnstable County's been very active in it, the adjacent towns have been very active in it. We've addressed public works, emergency services, such as mutual aid, and even training and mentorship for youth in the area. And next month, I think we'll be very close to a host of agreements that will allow us to formalize some of the things that we've always done as good neighbors, and find new ways to work, such as capitalizing on the efficiencies of bulk purchases. So we're very excited about it. So we're very excited about it. I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that that's really the big news coming out of Joint Base Cape Cod. I can just very quickly kind of show you who we've got here tonight. Colonel Pat Keefe from Camp Edwards is going to be represented by Colonel Sean Cody tonight. Colonel Virginia Dunham from the 102nd is going to be represented by Colonel McNulty, her XO. Colonel Nathan Hippie from the 6th Space Warning Squadron is going to be represented by Major Boyd, I almost forgot his name, it's kind of terrible. And the Coast Guard's going to be represented by Mike Hudson, the Commander of Base Cape Cod. I'm just going to breeze through these. You know where it is, you know how big it is. There's some economic impact. We're sort of in the middle of the pack for the six installations around the Commonwealth. This does go to your community. This is just to give you an idea of all the other bases in Massachusetts would fit on Joint Base Cape Cod. The predominance of the acreage, as you know, what used to be called the Massachusetts Military Reservation, also the Upper Cape Water Supply Reservation, is the training area for Camp Edwards. You probably are aware of the history of sort of mismanagement of that area and the water in the region. And I, I am prouder than anything of the progress that we have made, not just in cleaning up and developing the methods of stewardship, but in the way that the communities that surround the base, where we used to be so antagonistic. We now work through the Environmental Management Commission with the Citizen Advisory Committee and the Scientific Advisory Committee. And it, it's colloquial, it's supportive, and it's collaborative. It's just, it's been a 180 from what it was back in the early days of contamination, a word we don't like to use. I'm just going to skip this, the future vision for Joint Base Cape Cod. The reason we called it a joint base is to sort of highlight the fact that we work well together and to provide protection when Congress finally enacted another base realignment and closure action. We don't know if that's coming in the future. There's some debate about that. But what it really is, is it's Massachusetts' own public safety and national security enclave, where each of these commanders respects each other, each other's mission. They collaborate with each other because it just makes sense, and it's an effective way of doing business. And we feel that we're going to be a partner down here in the Cape for years to come, and continue to grow, and meet new demands in the national security and public safety workspace. And with that, what I'd like to do is immediately call up Colonel Sean Cody, and he's going to talk about Joint Base Cape Cod, unless you have any questions specifically.
Do you want to go through the presentations, and then we'll do questions at the end? Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, General. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. My name's Sean Cody, Deputy Commander at Camp Edwards. I work for Colonel Pat Keefe, who both of us are traditional guardsmen, and he is also the Chief of Police of Andover. So he has town meeting this week, so he's a bit busy, so, so I'm here tonight to give you the briefing. Camp Edwards, that's our namesake right there, Clarence Edwards. He was the famed commander of the 26th Yankee Division, which celebrated its centennial this year when they went off to World War, World War I to fight. This is our strategic vision, mission, commander's intent, key tasks, and our motto. And I'm going to, like the general, go quickly. Basically, we're 15,000 acres. Our soldiers, we have 6,000 or so soldiers. We have 936 hours a year to train them, so it makes sense to have a local training area. We're a terrestrial force, so we need a ground to maneuver, to communicate, and to practice what we need to do. We want to be the best there is in the country. That's what all that says. And down the bottom, victory starts here. That's because I see the Incorporated Barnstable in 1639. We started in 1636 by the Great and General Corps of Massachusetts. So we carry that lineage to that day, and we're very proud of it. Here are some of the highlights. We're the largest training center in New England. The closest to us is Fort Drum in New York, and it's active duty, so that makes us a secondary user and not a primary user. So it's very important that we're able to control these 22,000 acres. We trained over 46,000 soldiers last, last year. So that's army math, you know, that's one soldier could have been here for 14 days, et cetera, but that number is very significant because at one point in World War II, 46,000 was the population that we had at the base, training to go over the Pacific and European theaters. We have 2,000 civilians, and we've mobilized since 2011. Again, we have a force of approximately 6,000. We've mobilized 15,000 soldiers. So basically, everybody in the Massachusetts Guard is deployed about two and a half times since 9/11. Down, jump down to the bottom, where we've invested, the Army and the Air Force, $1.1 billion in environmental compliance and mitigation. And like General McGurn said, in the 80s and 90s, formerly MMR was where you wanted to look for what not to do. Now we're the place to look for how to move forward and train your soldiers the right way in a compatible environment. These are our capabilities. We train as a modular force, so that's, means brigade size, about 2,000 to 5,000 soldiers, give or take the type of brigade. That's what we can support. We have hundreds of miles of roadways to train our soldiers, both paved and unpaved. We, we train all different types of forces, from the FBI to SEAL Team Six, to the Navy, to the Air Force. Everybody trains there, to local law enforcement. This is just some photos from some of the soldiers training at the base for our federal and state mission, and then on the right side, going ahead and putting that into action in either Afghanistan Iraq, the Boston Marathon, or many of the state storms or blizzards that we get called out to into the different communities. Environmental and safety, this year, we have, again, 15,000 acres, so we need to protect that, and we need to ensure that our special species are protected. So we do that through fire, through maneuvers, in certain areas, through mutual aid. We burned 600 acres last year. We're also the regional center for training folks on how to do prescribed fire, so we're very proud of that. Colonel McGurn mentioned physical security, our partnership award. And our partnership award was won mostly because of the cooperative way we worked through JBCC, but then all the towns and all the agencies we worked with through the 80s and 90s to get us to where we are today. What we do ask, when we come out, the towns ask us, what do you want from us? We just want to, and not so much in Barnstable, but in Born, Falmouth, Mashpee, and Sandwich that surround us, is we need some help with, with folks that come on base that aren't supposed to be there, because it could be dangerous. There are some UXOs. We've, we've gone out and gotten rid of most of the unexploded ordinance, but it's more of a fact, if they go out there and you get lost, you break an ankle, blow, blow a tire, and you call 911, no one's finding anybody in 22,000 acres if we don't know you're out there. So we ask the towns to help us keep down on the trespassing. And with that, gentlemen, I'm going to turn it over to Colonel McNulty.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Colonel David McNulty. I'm the Vice Commander for the 102nd Intelligence Wing. Colonel Virginia Dunham sends her regrets. The 102nd Intelligence Wing is comprised of a little over 1,200 airmen. We're broken out into five subordinate units called groups. Three of those have operational missions. Two of them do intelligence missions. One is essentially serves as the landing spot for all information that's collected by US Air Force reconnaissance aircraft, like the U-2, and unmanned aerial vehicles like the MQ-9 Reaper. The 202 ISR group does cyber intelligence. So if you think about, instead of collecting it from an airplane, if you're collecting it off of a foreign government's computer, they're doing that type of intelligence work. And then our cyber engineering and installation group is doing communication engineering and installation to improve airfields and runways overseas. Our two support groups are our mission support group, which obviously provides the security for the base, the civil engineers, keeps the lights on, and then our, our medical group keeps us healthy, and then also serves as the medical component to the Homeland Response Force. As the Air National Guard, just like the Army National Guard, we have both a state mission and a federal function. So in the state mission, they would go support any nuclear, radiological, or chemical, biological attack on the homeland. They're the, the element that would support medically. Next slide, please. If I got the button here? All right, there we go. As far as what we've been up to over the last year, we wrapped up the largest deployment that we've had in about 10 years for our mission support group, our civil engineers, and our security forces, and some of the wing staff had deployed overseas. In the meantime, we continue for, now going into our ninth year of a deployed and placed mission, where essentially we are fighting overseas contingency operations from sunny Cape Cod because of the wonders of modern technology that's piping that information back onto us at the Cape. Cyber intelligence mission is standing up and should be fully operational by 2020. They'll reach initial operating capability in 2019. We have state partnerships with both Paraguay and Kenya. Given Kenya's geopolitical system, being very close to the Somali border and some transnational terrorist groups, we've been significantly involved in state partnership work with Kenya. And then for domestic operations, again, on our state mission, our medical team is deployed out. They do as a precautionary measure for things like the Espinade. And then for the Boston Marathon, we send out communications, security teams to the Fourth of July. And then our information awareness and assessment, so that's an intelligence mission if you're supporting the homeland, is information awareness and assessment. We supported that remotely from Cape Cod in support of Hurricane Harvey response efforts and Hurricane Irma response efforts after Houston was hit pretty hard, and then Florida, and then swung back and helped out after Winter Storm Riley kind of ravaged the coast here of Massachusetts. As far as where we're going, ongoing initiatives, we're trying to right-size the base, so we don't fly jets off the ramp anymore, but we're still kind of a large industrial-sized footprint, and we're trying to right-size for the missions that we have right now. So divesting excess property and reducing our land footprint, trying to privatize legacy utility systems that we have, and then repurposing the large hangar that used to house a significant portion of our F-15s. On the energy side, we've got a solar project, trying to use a capped landfill to put a solar field out that would add to the wind turbine that we use for some renewable energy. And then a microgrid project, so instead of thinking of it as energy savings, that's energy resiliency, so that if power were shut down to the Cape, Otis Air National Guard Base, the 102nd Intelligence Wing would continue to operate based on our generators, wind, solar power. And the key there is that since we would serve as a staging area and command and control for the Cape if we all lost power, it's important that we're able to keep that resiliency going. And that's all I have. I'll hand off to the other airmen in the room.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Major Dan Boyd. I'm the Operations Officer for the 6th Space Warning Squadron at Cape Cod Air Force Station, commonly known here, I think, as the pave pause radar. So we are North America's sole east coast missile warning radar, and our primary mission is missile warning. So we will detect and track both intercontinental ballistic missiles and submarine launch missiles. Our secondary mission is space surveillance, so we'll track objects in low Earth orbit, be it debris or satellites. And then a future mission that's going to come online, hopefully in the first quarter of 2018, is missile defense. And so approximately 20 launches a year, we track out of Cape Canaveral and Wallops Island in Virginia, and we, we track over 3 million satellite passes each year. Our squadron is comprised of 135 military, civilian, and contractors, and then we're also binational, because we have two Canadian active duty members in our squadron also. So we are a GSG, so a geographically separated unit, and our headquarters is at Peterson Air Force Base under the 21st Space Wing, and there are multiple other missile warning radars that are out. We have some on the west coast, up in Alaska, up in Tulley, Greenland, and in the United Kingdom. So we've been providing 24/7, 365 operations for the last 40 years, about 40 years, and the radar, just to age itself, is slightly older than I am, so. All right, so we maintain a $4.1 million operational budget, and then for us, since we're such a small squadron, partnerships and community support is key for us. So we are heavily reliant on the joint base for, and the other unit commanders here, for everything from housing to the clinic to the exchange. We use a lot of their facilities because most of our facilities are solely for the radar. We also have a lot of support agreements with local fire and law enforcement, and then we have significant support from either local clubs and businesses, schools, charitable organizations. And I think I can confidently say that this, right here in New England, I've never seen such good community support, so I want to thank everybody for that, and the community for your support. You really make us feel at home when we're here, so thank you. Some significant milestones and projects. So our wind turbines, they've been here, we've got two on our site, and they've been here since 2014, but we projected that it'd offset about 50% of our electric bill, but it's actually been closer to 90%, so it's actually incredible savings that we have from our site. And then just finally, last year, out of the nine other missile warning squadrons that we have, we were selected as the best space warning squadron in Air Force Space Command, which is our major, major command that we fall under. And then back to the missile defense piece, so right now we're undergoing $125 million upgrade. So we're going to go from being an EWR, which is Early Warning Radar, to the upgraded Early Warning Radar, which basically takes our 1970s technology and modernizes it to be more efficient and process all of our returns much better. And I think I'm going to hand it off to Captain Hudson at this point. Thank you.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Captain Mike Hudson. I'm the commanding officer of Coast Guard Base Cape Cod. There are two major Coast Guard commands inside the fence line at Joint Base Cape Cod. One is the base, which gets a little confusing. People talk about a base inside a base and that sort of thing. The other is Air Station Cape Cod. I'm not the pilot Coast Guard guy out there. I'm actually a cutterman. I went to see on some of our larger ships, and so I'll do my best talking about aviation things here. So the air station is the Coast Guard's sole air station in all the northeast of the United States, so it has a coverage area from basically New Jersey up to the Canadian border. They do it with three fixed-wing aircraft that you see in the lower left there. That's a C-144 CASA fixed-wing aircraft, twin-engine. And then they do it with three rotary-wing helicopters, the M860 Tango, which is the other aircraft that you see there. And they have about 175 or so active duty, just a couple civilians, and most of their, their unit is, is active duty. And in a typical year, which last year basically was, they, they do about 217 search and rescue cases throughout the region. And because of just the laydown of assets in the Coast Guard, they also provide the fixed-wing search and rescue support in the Great Lakes region. It's not that far away if you're a fixed-wing aircraft, so they cover that. Some major events for the air station last year, of course, we had the Ferry I N O rescue last June from that mishap. Both aviation assets and colleagues down at Sector Southeastern New England in Woods Hole had resources that, that supported that, that rescue case. Hurricanes Harvey, Irma, and Maria, after 20-some years in the Coast Guard, I can still be wowed by the Coast Guard's response, and last year was a wow year with respect to the three hurricanes. The Coast Guard as a whole rescued over nearly 12,000 people in those three storms. If you like your pet, we also rescued 1,500 pets in the course of those three storms as well. And I'll, I'll get to more of the air station's specific accomplishments in the next slide with that. We also send some of the aircraft, the fixed-wing aircraft, downrange to combat transnational organized crime, counter-narcotic mission, if you will. They stage in the Western Caribbean and in the Eastern Pacific, and they, and their deployments this year targeted and were able to direct the seizure of about $230 million in cocaine. So with respect to the hurricanes, for Harvey, Air Station Cape Cod basically sent half of their aircraft down to the Texas Gulf Coast, and a third of their personnel back when the storm hit. In addition, the particular type of fixed-wing aircraft that we have provides good airspace deconfliction, meaning they had a lot of helicopters, a lot of people trying to make aerial rescues, given everything was flooded, and you don't want planes bumping into each other, right? So that particular fixed-wing platform is a good command and control aircraft for airspace deconfliction. So that was another, in addition to the 111 lives they saved, they provided additional value in that regard. Lots of cargo, lots of bottled water and food and things were transported with that aircraft. And then barely coming back to home station, they turned right around and went down to Irma with a third of their aircraft, two aircraft, and 20% of their personnel. And then additional posturing for Hurricane Tropical Storm Jose and Hurricane Maria. So the base, my, my command, Base Cape Cod, is pretty much everything else Coast Guard-related out there. So, you know, the Coast Guard presence on the joint base has been there since about 1970, when the air station came down from Salem. And it was about four years ago that we said, you know what, we want our pilots to be focusing on flying. Let, let the pilot and the air crew get in an aircraft on a dark and stormy night and not be thinking about whether there's a leak in the roof on Building 5215 or something like that, and, and all the other support functions that, that go on in that base. So in August 2014, we carved out what we in the Coast Guard call Base Cape Cod, and I'm essentially the landlord for all Coast Guard activities out there. In addition, that basically makes me the landlord for about 3,500 acres of Coast Guard-operated and managed land, which includes the entire airfield complex. Some of the other Coast Guard presence that's out there, in addition to the air station, we have a new unit coming down. They're actually moving in, unpacking boxes this week. The Maritime Safety and Security Team used to be garrisoned up in Boston. It's now down here. That's a unit of 50 to 60 roughly active-duty Coast Guardsmen. Their mission is, is the title of their unit, their specialized law enforcement team, essentially. We also have Port Security Unit 301, the Northeast Regional Fish Training Center, the Armory Range, and, and Door Range, and Marine Safety Detachment Cape Cod. While I'm the supporting commander to all those people, in addition to be the landlord, the While I'm the supporting commander to all those people, in addition to being the landlord, the sector and Woods Hole that I mentioned a moment ago, I'm also their supporting commander, and they have all the small boat stations from Provincetown over to Point Judith, Rhode So what are some of those things I provide? Well, it's all the things that you would expect a landlord to provide. So we have a very, very robust public works and facility engineering mission there. We have 215 active housing units on base. We also have another 60 housing units out off-base in Harwich, Martha's Vineyard, and Nantucket combined there, and the 3,500 acres, it keeps our engineers pretty busy. But then we do all the other logistical, shipping-receiving, buying, financial accounting, et cetera. The health, safety, and work-life is our medical clinic that we use for the Coast Guardsmen and also for the Space Warning Squadron, we support them as well with that. Personnel perspective, in addition to the housing, for anybody who has been on base and has base access, you know that we have some nice facilities, we have a nine-hole golf course, movie theater, bowling alley, things that kind of, and a child development center that care for not just Coast Guardsmen, but all the other service components that are on the base as well, so we, you know, manage the holistic service member there. And that is the, that's Base Cape Cod. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you coming in. Did you want a few more closing remarks?
I just want to say that concludes our briefing, and if there are any questions, we know you have a busy night, just want to express again my gratitude for having us here. If any of you would ever care to take a peek at what's actually going on over there, you're welcome, you're welcome to just give us a yell. All of us stand by to pick up the phone, and we'd be happy to hear your questions.
Take on a microphone.
Thank you very much. Any councilor questions? Counselor Hebert.
Very much. Just speaking as a veteran myself, I just want to express great gratitude and appreciation that you took the time to come and talk to us, that you are truly members of our greater Cape Cod community, and we hope that you understand why we are hospitable to you, because we thank you every single day that you get up and you do your job. Thank you so much.
Well, we appreciate that very much, Mr. Hebert. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Counselor Abkarsedi.
Thank you very much for your presentation. You had mentioned something about the groundwater. Where are you with the cleanup of the groundwater? I mean, I think I heard it's substantially complete, or?
Yeah, so Sean's jumping up because in his day job, he does the impact area groundwater study. So we've made great strides, but if you're keeping an eye on the press throughout the nation, we're seeing emerging contaminants, not so much that they're emerging from the ground, but that their levels are now being questioned by the EPA as to what is the level you don't want to consume. They're called perchlorofluorites, close. They're in housing products, but they're also in, you know, firefighting foam and things like that. Some of the folks that have worked this problem with us for the last 20 years are saying it's like deja vu all over again. The good news is, as Sean, and I should probably let Sean explain it, the practices that we have had for the previous cleanups appear to be the right practices for this cleanup as well. Sean, if you want to elaborate.
So we clean currently about 15 million gallons a day. We've identified all the sources of contamination from over the years, from the entire 22,000 acres. And everything is in containment, except for some of the PFAS and PFOA issues that you all are aware of, from our fighter firefighter training areas down the south of the base. But we have treatment systems in place, we have source removal that was already done, and we're currently out there conducting source removal that could be future sources that currently aren't. So we're ahead of the game, and we pump about 15 million gallons of water, we treat it, and then we put it right back down in the ground.
That's good to hear, thank you. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why you're liked a little bit more by your neighbors because of the cleanup on that. But you also mentioned something about divesting property. How much property are you thinking about divesting, and maybe a road or two to be built through there for the public use?
So that's always an interesting question, you know. After 2001, security changed dramatically for obvious reasons, and it was obviously pretty disruptive for the greater Cape Cod community. We are looking at ways that we can divest, in particular Connery Ave, to the Department of Transportation. That is a, that's, you know, a very holistic mess, that includes, you know, what happens at either end of it. It's not in the immediate offing, but it is something that we're looking at. The biggest challenge for us is there are still things that we need to secure, and even if we secured, you know, the training area, which also protects the water, each of these installations' core functions, it's a fairly expensive proposition, but we're looking at ways to get it done. I would say it's a long way off, but it's not out of the question completely. But largely the divestiture is going from defense component to defense component. So the Coast Guard's picking up some, Camp Edwards is picking up some, and various other the state, the Commonwealth. We recently divested one package back to Fish and Wildlife as mitigation for the solar project that Colonel McNulty mentioned. So they're those kinds of swaps. No sales.
Anyone else? No? Well, thank you again, all of you for being here, really appreciate it, and thank you for all your work. I did want to continue on with Council Communications. I have one quick announcement, and Elizabeth Jenkins kind of touched on it. We're going to have some different tax incentives that we're going to be taking up, and for a long time now, we've had what's called the TIF Committee, the Tax Incentive Financing Committee, and that's the latest iteration of that over the last couple of years. It's been a committee that meets when there's an application, but it's Vice President Crocker, Counselor Wallace, and Counselor Flores, and that committee is going to meet tomorrow morning, but it's to look at these other incentives, to kind of start to set some parameters around them, and I'm going to rename that committee the Tax Incentive Committee, because it's not just TIFs we're going to be doing, it's a variety of incentive tools. So I just wanted to make that announcement, that that committee name is going to change going forward. Any other Council Communications? Counselor Dagwan?
Yes, I just want to mention the YMCA Achievers Benefit coming up on May 17th, it's the same night that we have the Town Council meeting, so I know many of us will not be able to attend, but I want to thank everyone who contributed towards the Purchington Table representing the council will be there. And I also just want to mention quickly, the Hyannis Open Street event that'll be coming up on May 20th, I'll speak about that again on the 18th. We're still looking for volunteers to help us out on May 20th, it's a Sunday, from 12 to 5:00, and you can get ahold of me at the, by contacting the Town Council Office here in Town Hall and leaving me a message, your name, your number, and I can get in contact with you if you'd like to volunteer. Or you may call me at my home at 508-778-6824, and the more volunteers we have, the more activities we can put on. And again, I just want to mention that everything is free to the public, so we do appreciate the volunteers that we get. Thank you.
Any other councilors? Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is in, by way of helping the Commonwealth to make some good decisions, we are still working actively getting the NIPS off the streets. I don't know how it is in everybody else's precinct, but the folks in my precinct and others have called me about the really sad condition of our landscape with the tremendous amount of litter that is everywhere, and so the NIPS are not biodegradable, the NIPS are photodegradable, which means that that plastic toxic material goes into our land and also goes into our water. So if, I think the fastest way, if you could respond, it's an active in the committee now, is if you take the time to write to the President of the House, the Speaker of the House, I'm sorry, Mr. DeLeo, to ask for his support in moving that, the NIP process forward. And in the same way, I'm looking at the straws, if you can, you folks at home and all of us, when you go out to a restaurant, if you could say, please skip the straw, I don't need the straw. It's like 500 million straws used in the United States every single day, and it is fighting our way to the water and causing environmental damage. And so litter is a main concern right now. I was out on the parks today collecting material, and no less than two visitors stopped me, thanked me for what I was doing, and then said they were horrified by how much litter they're seeing on Cape Cod, so we all need to work together on it. And I promise not to start a campaign to abolish the straws if we all make an effort to cut down.
Is there a NIP bill?
Thank you. There is a NIP bill currently in place. Thank you.
Any other councilors? No? All right, we're going to move into the orders of the day. I'm going to take an item out of order under New Business. Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2018-142, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Under New Business, 2018-142, approval of a contract for Mark S.L.'s as Barnstable Town Manager and its executor. Resolve that the Town Council approves a contract for Mark S.L.'s to serve as the Town Manager and authorize the Council President to sign on behalf of the Council and the Town of Barnstable, sponsored by the Town Manager Contract Subcommittee.
All right, I have a second. Just a quick overview of the process that we talked about at the last meeting. We had a Contract Subcommittee that met, made some recommended changes, just a couple really, an extension, and that draft was discussed in our executive session last meeting. And with the council's blessing, I presented that draft contract to the manager for his review, and it came back good to go. So this is on our agenda tonight to vote that. They're awaiting my signature back in the office, and I will sign them tonight if this passes, so. Any council discussion on this item?
Who's the question?
All those in favor moving the question? All right, this is item 2018-142, approval of a contract with Mark S.L.'s as the Barnstable Town Manager. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Congratulations. I want to thank Mark S.L.'s for his work these past two years, and he did have one year left on the existing contract, so this actually extends that three years, so we'll have him at least for another four years and look forward to working with him, so thank you very much. All right, we're going to go back under Old Business. Vice President Crocker, could you please read item 2018-074, open the public hearing and continue until May 17th, please?
Yes, Mr. President. Under Old Business, public hearing open and continued to May 17th. 2018-074, appropriation loan order in the amount of $1 million for the purpose of funding the Kettuitt Bay Entrance Channel dredging project as outlined in fiscal year 2019 through fiscal 2023 capital improvement plan as written.
I have a second. All those in favor of opening the public hearing and continuing, item 2018-074 to May 17th, 2018. And that is unanimous. Moving on to the next item under Old Business, Counselor Hebert, could you please read item 2018-108, please?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Item number 2018-108, authorizing the Town Manager to execute a regulatory agreement between the Town of Barnstable and the Housing Assistance Corporation, as read this public hearing and roll call.
And this is, you did open the public hearing on this?
I did open the public hearing, thank you.
All right, and I have a second, so for the rationale here, who's giving the rationale?
You want us to begin?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I didn't know if your protocol was the Town Consular reads it, I know it's in your package, I can?
No, you can go ahead if you're doing the rationale on it. Yep, go ahead. Introduce yourself, state your name.
Sure, absolutely. For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant, and I'll dispense with introducing the team until after I read the rationale. I'm also a member of the Board of Housing Assistance Corporation, and the rationale is right on, it's why everybody's excited. We seek the approval, which the Planning Board did support because of the revitalization efforts. Would you like me to read the entire thing or just summarize?
Basically, you know, you can summarize. We have it in our packets, and we've had it for some time to review.
Exactly, it's on page 16 of your package, and it is the essence of smart growth, this parcel, because it has a derelict foundation that's been there for many, many years, 10 or 15 years. It's unsightly, it's a potential attractive nuisance, and all of the tenants of smart growth and even the policies that the Town Planning Director is working towards for revitalization, truly, this project epitomizes that, and at the same time, it will also help address the housing need and revitalize the east end of Hyannis. It adheres to the smart growth principles, it's going to improve stormwater drainage, it's going to basically upgrade the area, and at the same time, provide affordable units. So in essence, that is the rationale. We think it's a great opportunity to really do this in this location and frankly be a model for the future.
Okay, is that the end of the presentation?
That's the rationale. Would you like us to proceed with presentation?
Yeah, do the presentation, then we're going to have a public hearing.
Sure. First, let me introduce our team members who are here. We have the Director of Housing Assistance Corp., Elisa Galazzi. We have Dave Quinn and Sandy Horvitz from our Housing Development, Real Estate Development Office. We also have our professional team with Brian Kuchar, engineer from Horsley Witten Engineering. And we have from Union Studios, the architects. We have Doug Colfels and Cara Babcock. So if I left somebody out, forgive me, we have various members in the audience, but in terms of presenters and the team, those are the folks who are up here.
Welcome.
So I'll just give a very brief overview, and then the rest of the folks, starting with Elisa, will give you remarks. In a nutshell, first point is the rationale. It's a great project, both for Hyannis and for Housing Assistance Corporation, with our mission and our goal to help create housing, and there is a big need for housing of this type, rental housing, small enough so that it doesn't have detrimental impact on the area, it improves the area, as we said, big enough so that it really is meaningful in creating eight rental units. Six of them are one-bedroom, two of them are two-bedroom. We worked with the town staff, the main thing I want to focus on before turning it over to others, is that when the site came to us, we were excited by it. We worked with the town staff, starting with your Planning Director, Elizabeth Jenkins, and her colleagues. We had a great response, took into account ideas that were suggested. We went through the process, which is a good process, we went through a site plan review, had a good meeting with them, took into account the suggestions, got the approval of site plan review. Then, of course, the way this regulatory agreement process works, we went to the Planning Board, had a good hearing meeting with them, and got their approval, as you know, and we're totally happy with the regulatory agreement draft that is proposed and that's appended to your papers, which of course is what you will formally be voting on. So we're excited to be able to do this development, and I'll stop there and turn it over first to Elisa for a few words about mission and this project. Thanks.
Hi, my name's Elisa Galazzi, can you hear me?
Just going to make sure the green light's on.
Green light is, there we go, it's on. Okay, now you can hear me, correct? Hi, my name's Elisa Galazzi, I'm the Chief Executive Officer at Housing Assistance Corporation. I've been there for, since January of 2017, and I'm going to give you the big picture, and then my team here is going to give you the details. And you know our work and you know the agency well, so I will spare you the details, but only to tell you that we serve about 5,000 clients a year, 5,000 residents throughout the region of Cape Cod, and we've been serving, we've been operating for over 44 years, or actually, this evening was our annual meeting, it was our 44th year we're celebrating. So we also develop affordable housing as part of our mission, and we have developed 500 units to date, and on your screens are some photos, they're high-quality, well-managed projects. We have a property management team, and we manage about 50 units, and these would fit into that portfolio. Lastly, we know, and before you, earlier with Elizabeth Jenkins, we know that we have a housing shortage and we need rental units, and we believe this is a good project for us to invest in as a nonprofit agency, putting some capital into an area that needs some reinvestment dollars and also add housing, so I hope that you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave Quinn, also with Hack. Just wanted to kind of start by laying the big picture about our project to kind of set the scene, and we'll go in more detail as we go through the presentation into the details of what we're proposing to do. We have a map on the screen which is of Hyannis, so you can see So you can see the project location on Ridgewood Ave., which is a cut-through street between Center Street up to Route 28, right downtown. It's walkable to the Hyannis Transportation Center, to Main Street, right down to the harbor. So we think this is really a great location to do a smart growth development. And we've been actually working as a team to try to find a location to do a project like this. And when we came across this property, we knew this was a great location for it because of all those factors. We're hoping that this is a replicable project, so this will be the first of many. We are, we're hoping that this model that we're proposing is something that the town would be interested in seeing done over and over in the coming years. So just kind of zooming in closer to the parcel itself. This is 57 Ridgewood Ave. If you're familiar with the street, you may know this as the foundation lot. People who drive by this every day always comment to us that this is really an eyesore. And it would be a great location for some housing. The neighborhood itself is kind of a mix of industrial or commercial across the street. You have Beard Chevrolet. You have a mix of multifamily housing, single-family housing. Some owner-occupied, some rented out. But you can see, this lot has been like this for over a decade, maybe 15 years or so. At one point, a developer tried to develop a house or townhouses there. So for whatever reason, that didn't happen. But we really feel like this is a neighborhood that needs a lot of investment. And Hack, we want to be the first into that neighborhood, try to invest in that neighborhood and hopefully improve the property values in the neighborhood and also bring more life to the neighborhood. The next slide, you can see, so this is sort of going back to a former subdivision plan. At one point, this was actually three individual parcels, which explains why it's so much larger than the other parcels on the street. So at one time, this would have been three single-family homes if it had remained that way. And so you're looking at the same angle view as the satellite image with Ridgewood Ave. on the right there. So you can see, our model for what we want to do is to create a pocket neighborhood, which is basically a neighborhood within a neighborhood. In typical development, a townhouse development, you might see all of the townhouses pointed out towards the street with parking directly in front. We've kind of changed that model, working very closely with our architect, to try to create something that was a little more aesthetically pleasing, that created a sense of community, again, adopting those smart growth principles and trying to create something that is a model for the community. It is three buildings, eight units total. We have six market rate units and two affordables. The two affordables would be for residents in town making 80% or less of AMI. So these are still your working professionals in the community. There are six one-bedroom units, and those are in the triplex. And then there's two two-bedroom units as well. So I will leave it there and hand it over to our architect to kind of go into more of the details about the design.
Good evening. I'm Cara Babcock. I'm an architect with Union Studio out of Providence, Rhode Island. I think you're pretty familiar with our work we've presented in front of you recently, with some other work that we're doing in the area. But we're an office of 22 architects and urban planners. And our main goal is to make a civic contribution to the communities, similar to Hyannis. We try and devote our skills as planners and architects to the creation and repair of neighborhoods. And we believe that healthy neighborhoods help communities thrive. Quickly, some principles of healthy neighborhoods that we try and promote through our work is that they're walkable and pedestrian-friendly, that the housing meets the broad needs of the community, that public and private outdoor spaces and amenities are provided, and that the architectural design is contextual. So tonight, I want to present two recently completed projects by our office that achieve similar density and character to what we're proposing at Ridgewood Avenue. The first is cottages on Green, which was completed in 2010 in East Greenwich, Rhode Island. And you can see from the map that it is in the downtown area of East Greenwich, but it is in a single-family residential zone. Some quick facts on this project. It's on a .5-acre site, and the project that we're proposing at Ridgewood Ave. is .71 acres. This project was 15 units total in nine buildings, and it's comprised of duplexes, triplexes, and single-family homes. The community is organized around a linear court and gardens, and this provides a communal space for the residents to gather. And this project was a mixed-income project. There were five affordable units and 10 market rate units. Each of the units was a two-bedroom, and it was about 1,000 square feet for each unit. The next project that we recently completed was in Concord, Massachusetts, called Concord Riverwalk. This project was also very close to downtown Concord. You can see it's right off of the main street. It's in a single-family residential zone. This was on 3.7 acres of land. It was all single-family housing. There were 13 homes on three acres of land. And each of these homes has a front porch that faces the common space. And this really provided a sense of community with the density that we provided on this site. Each of the units was market rate, and they were about two-bedroom, two to three bedrooms, around 1,300 to 1,800 square feet each. So we are proposing the same design principles from those communities for Ridgewood Avenue, which is also in a single-family district near downtown Hyannis. And we are proposing a compact cottage village, which is organized around a linear court, which provides a nice setting for neighborhood gatherings, but it also formally addresses the street of Ridgewood. And this kind of organization around a court, which with each unit having a front porch, really helps layer the public and private spaces. And you can see from this image that the project will consist of two triplex buildings and one duplex. I think Dave talked a bit about how those are going to be laid out. But the duplex house is going to have two 1,500-square-foot units, and the triplexes will have 1,300-square-foot units. And we're hoping that our site plan and these buildings and the way that they're laid out on the site will really help infill the missing tooth of Ridgewood that exists right now with the empty lot as it is. You can see from the previous image and from this image that the massing that we're proposing and the height of the buildings is very similar to what exists on Ridgewood and in the community of Hyannis. The top two images, the first one to your left is Ridgewood Avenue, and the second one to your right is South Street. And you can see that South Street homes are about 30 feet tall. And some of the text is misting from the left-hand image, but those are about 25 feet tall. And the buildings that we're proposing are about 30 feet tall from grade to the top of the roof ridge. These are the proposed elevation, front elevations of each of the buildings. And you can see that there are very simple gable forms that are similar to the Cape Cod vernacular, but slightly modernized. And to quickly just run through the floor plans of each of the units, the duplex unit will be a two-bedroom, two bedrooms on the second floor with a shared full bath, a living space near the front entry off the front porch, and a shared dining and kitchen space in the rear of the unit with a half bath. The triplex unit is this very similar layout with a large living space, a shared kitchen and dining space in the back. But the triplex units will be a loft layout where the living space will be cathedral ceiling with an open bedroom on the second floor and a full bath. So it's our hope that by implementing the same design principles used in communities that we have worked on previously, that we'll be able to achieve the goal of creating an intimate village that will enrich the community of Hyannis and will repair the fragmented street edge of Ridgewood Avenue.
Thanks, Cara. My name is Brian Kuchar. I am a senior landscape architect and civil engineer from the Horsley Witten Group. As many of you may know, Horsley Witten is a Cape Cod-based environmental consulting firm. On this particular project, we're providing both landscape architectural and engineering, site engineering services in collaboration with Union Studio and with obviously the Housing Assistance Corp. So Horsley Witten, we've been really providing sustainable environmental solutions and site design work for affordable housing communities throughout New England. But I just want to acknowledge that we've had a longstanding working relationship with the Housing Assistance Corp. And we typically look to partner with our clients that have shared values. And I think the Housing Assistance Corp. is one of those companies that we enjoy working with and definitely shares our environmental and sustainable values. So I'm not going to take too much of your time. I'm just going to give you a very brief overview of the site design. It is an existing disturbed site, as was shown in one of the earlier aerial photos. There's three buildings proposed on the site, eight total units, with 12 parking spaces and one handicap space. So that's about 1.5 spaces per unit, plus the one additional, which is a handicap space. We're also looking to use green infrastructure to treat all of the storm water through the use of bioretention. Those are located in the blue shaded shapes on the plan. In particular, most of the drainage is going to what you see on your plan in the lower-left corner. And then it is important to point out that all of the storm water will be infiltrated through underground recharge chambers and taking advantage of the well-drained soils that we have here on Cape Cod. So we'll be providing both pre-treatment and then infiltrating up to the 100-year storm. So there'd be very little in the way of off-site runoff from this proposed project. It's also important to note that we are saving 13 trees. I heard someone mention earlier about the tulip tree, no, sorry, the little leaf linden that was coming down. So in this case, we are trying to save as many trees on-site, and we're adding an additional 17 to fill in the site and eventually to provide shade. And they also provide stormwater treatment over the life of the tree. I think that covers our presentation, and we're now open for questions. Thank you.
Correct. That is our presentation. The only other thing, I'll just say quickly, in your package is also the list of waivers, which staff worked with us. And the requests that we made were, we satisfied the planning board. They're actually quite innocuous. There are very few of them. They're in your package. I won't take the time to go through each one unless you would like me to. But again, we went through the site plan review and received the support of town staff. So again, as Brian just said, we are finished with our formal presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. That is page 14, if anyone wants to look in the packet there. All right, we're going to go into the public hearing now, and then we'll have council questions and discussions. So if any members of the public wish to speak to this item, please come forward.
Good evening, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Folks, my name is Josh Lemoy. I'm a representative of Buckler's Towing. We work out of Ridgewood Avenue. There are a lot of questions and concerns that we do have. I am also a resident of Ridgewood Avenue. I'm all about making Ridgewood great again. That's my Facebook hashtag almost daily when I mow my lawn. So I agree with it. The major concern that we see as a company on is the additional traffic. Ever since Pufferbellies has closed, which is great, the parking lots out back from the steamship, the RTA have all increased. That has increased the amount of buses up and down Ridgewood Avenue, as well as the commuter shuttles, town taxis, everyone else. That road itself with the steamship ferry, it's a cut-through, as you all know. Our roads are overcome by vehicles. They're everywhere. Ridgewood Avenue is a very dangerous road. People try to make the left-hand turn on Route 28 and buy honeydew donuts. The accidents are tenfold. The questions are adding in new cars, people. Where are we going to go with that? Has there been a traffic study done? Are we looking at adding lights on? I mean, as a tow company, we tow for the state police, the town of Barnstable, and the community of Cape Cod. We're in and out of that road all day. We have 60-foot tractor-trailers. We have 54-foot tow trucks. You name it, we run that road. Not saying that we own the road, per se, but if you are to watch the road 9:30 at night when the steamship pulls in, all of those boats cut through at a high rate of speed going to Mary Dunn, and they stage their trucks there at night. That road is active. I believe the last bus stops at around 1:00 a.m. It pulls out, and then they start rolling back in at 3:30, and they all come through there. Peter Pan is now running out of the Cape predominantly, Plymouth and Brockton, all great things, bringing in the community. It's just, the road is very tight, very small. Where are we at? If I believe correctly, when that road, or that house, now vacant lot, that was set to be a duplex almost 15 years ago, and the town denied it. And that's why that foundation is larger. Yes, it is, three parcels, as you said. But that was set for a foundation. The town said no. Foundation's now old, condemned. It is an eyesore. I agree with anyone. But is the answer, putting this many houses, 12 new vehicles, potentially 13, in and out, guess, what have you? So we ask that that be considered as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, council. My name is Cliff Carroll, lifelong resident of Barnstable. I've also been a mortgage banker involved in real estate here for about 38 years. And I also sit on the Finance Committee at the Housing Assistance Corp. I feel this project is not only a good investment for the town of Barnstable, but I think it's the beginning of a better partnership on the blend of the market rent, not market rent, but workforce rental units that the community needs very badly, combined with affordable housing for the project itself. I understand, Mr., I didn't get his name, but the gentleman from Buckler's concerns, but I really don't think that this project will have that type of impact at all on Ridgewood Ave. And I really feel it's been a long-time planning. As Mr. Friedman said, everybody has worked very closely with the staff. There's been a ton of time invested. Everybody's trying to do it correctly and trying to build a first-class piece of property on that street. I really believe not only will it help just from a housing standpoint, I think it'll encourage other surrounding investment in that neighborhood. It needs to be livened up a little bit, and I think this type of investment might get the inertia going on that type of neighborhood. So I just wanted to speak in support of the project, and I wanted to thank the council for their consideration and the staff at the planning board and everything for all their work that they've put into this over the last probably three to four months, or four months anyways. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Steven Ralcina. I appreciate what Hack is trying to do, but I actually own three single-family homes directly across the street in contract for a fourth. And my main concern, as I rent them to families, is 12 parking spaces with two two-bedrooms and six one-bedrooms. With two two-bedrooms, you're looking at approximately four to six cars just for those two units. The six one-bedrooms, you're looking at approximately, I mean, six to 12 cars. If somebody has a boyfriend or girlfriend, it could be couples. That is a lot of cars in a tight spot. And basically, the safety of people coming and going, the lights going into my tenant's front living room. I mean, again, I'm all for improving the area, but that many units to cram eight units on less than three-quarters of an acre doesn't seem like the right fix to me. I would be okay with four units, you know, something that would make sense. And again, regarding the parking, 12 spots for that many cars, that means nobody has any friends, nobody has, you know, there's parties, there's people coming and going. It just seems like people are going to be parking in front of my buildings and the neighbors. Steve Barbos is the, if you look at the plan here, he is this house right here. You've got three backyards directly against his two-bedroom windows. There's a lot of noise. It's going to be an echo chamber in there for the neighbors. It's going to be, I think that'll be a big problem there. Another thing, again, here's the parking lot with the 12 spots. Where does this, this is a curb, and there's the dumpster that goes there. With a big dumpster, you're going to get animals, you're going to... You're going to get loud trucks coming and going, obviously, once a week. That's, there are no big dumpsters in that area right now. When the snow, obviously, snow happens, there's literally nowhere to put the snow. Big, you know, where's the plow going to put the snow? It's going to cause problems. Then people, again, will be parking on the street, on my side of the street. What else do we have here? Like I said, the safety would be a big issue as well, because, again, dozen-plus cars coming and going. There are kids across the street. The sidewalk on my side of the street is level. There's literally no curb. There's no nothing. So, again, worst case, if we're, if it does get approved, I mean, they need to put a big curb or something on our side of the street with a crosswalk. And that's really it. I mean, like I said, I'm all in favor of improving the area. I have a lot of money, time, and everything invested over there, but, I mean, look at, talk to any police or fire person. Where do a lot of criminals, crime stuff, tight units? They're not, I mean, obviously, single-family stuff happens as well, but statistically in Hyannis, I don't think that street is an ISO right now. I don't think putting eight units on a little lot is going to do anything. And I think that is about it. Oh, the front, the front balconies and whatnot, obviously concerned that people are going to use that as a catch-all. And I understand the pictures look pretty now, but when you get toys and bikes and trash all over there, we don't know, I mean, I'm sure they're going to do a good job with maintenance, but it's hard to say you can't do this, you can't do that, like little nitpicky things, but it's going to add up over time. It's hard to get the highest-quality people to say, hey, come live here. There's eight units tied together. So, like I said, I really would appreciate if we could get some no votes on it, and if it does not happen, I'm more than willing to speak with Hack and try to work a deal out. I have the financier, the financing ready, then I would try to step up. Instead of just saying, no, 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 I don't want this in my neighborhood, I'm willing to step up to try to purchase the land and make it, you know, I'll turn it into a private park. I'll do something that will enhance my value on the street, the neighbors, and the whole neighborhood, because I think something like that is a little outside the box, a little unique, that could do something different for the neighborhood. Instead of just saying, let's put some housing in and nothing happens to any of, anybody's property value. It will look good for, you know, one day, and then when there's cars all over the lot, nobody's going to want to live there. And then, you know, we're stuck with the same situation. So, there's a potential that if it doesn't work out, something better could come up that could, you know, really enhance the neighborhood. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Susan Rohrbach. I live in Centerville. I am a board member at Housing Assistance Corporation. I know that this project has been being talked about and worked on for a very long time. I appreciate all the work that's been done, gone into it, and the support that it has received from other committees in the town, and I hope that you all will too. I could tell you a lot of positive things, but I think that you've heard them all. I think that this is a project that can be a forerunner for other similar projects that will give young people and people that are people that work in our town that can't afford a place to live, a place to live, and they will enhance their neighborhoods, not drag them down. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Steve Barbo. I reside at 73 Ridgewood Ave, the property immediately north of the empty lot. Unfortunately, I have been looking at it for many years. I've managed to look past it. I've done what I can to block it from my view with my own plantings. I agree this project is an enhancement, but I do not agree to the scale. I'd like to see it maybe a little smaller, fewer units, less people. I am young. I have been in the neighborhood since I was 21. I plan on staying there. I do have a family that resides there. I would just really like to see something nice. I am sick of the foundation. I'm not going to lie. I have talked to many neighbors about buying it. The late Stamak Land and I did junior, did talk about purchasing it in partnership at one point, but as you know, it's tough for young people on the Cape, so disposable income was not my strong suit. But I just think more people is going to be a problem. You heard everyone else, traffic and blah, blah, blah. I agree. I don't want to reiterate and keep beating the dead horse, but I'd like to see maybe six units, eliminate maybe two of the single bedrooms or eliminate one building altogether, or even put in four two-bedroom units, just to kind of scale it down a little bit. Density is, can be a problem. I am also afraid of trash and rodents and noise, but all in all, I like what you've done with your planning and the work, but I'd just like to see it maybe scaled down a little bit, maybe some actual road improvements itself. There are some drainage issues and lack of curbs and sidewalks on the opposite side of the street, and that's about all I have to say. I'd like to see some sort of mitigation, but limitation, not so much at larger scale as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Tara Wallace. I am a Hyannis resident. I'm also a social worker for the state of Massachusetts, and I work with the neediest of those in our community. And while I agree with traffic being a safety issue, I'm a mother of three children. I can relate to that concern and some of the other concerns that were brought up. The reality is, our community needs more housing. We need housing. We need housing, and I think we need to sit and weigh our options here and think about what's most important. Our neighbors are homeless. We have homeless neighbors right in our backyards, and it's very important that we work on creating more available housing, more housing. We need more housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Kathy Gibson. I am a washer-shore to the Cape 35 years ago. I am not a Barnstable resident, but I work in Barnstable with the neediest of the needy. I actually work with Tara. I'm a social worker for the state. I also am on the Board of Directors for Housing Assistance Corporation and happen to be vice chair of the Regional Network on Homelessness. So, I am well-versed on the needs of the community, regardless of how much money you make. Housing is the biggest issue facing Cape Cod right now. Housing and the opioid epidemic are the two biggest issues on the Cape. Providing eight rental units, which I myself would rent, I rent right now, and I'm a young professional, or relatively young professional, that would like to stay on Cape Cod. Don't know how much longer I'm going to be able to do that, though, if I ever have to move from the current rental that I have. I will have nowhere to rent, because there simply is not a housing inventory on the Cape, and we need it. We need it for all income brackets, and this particular housing development is a very small development. I, too, hear the points about, you know, headlights coming out. I happen to live across from the Baptist Church in Yarmouth, and every Wednesday night, I have headlights in my window. It's a price we pay to have something good across the street, and I really think this could be something good for the community. So, I hope you will follow the path of your town planning board and vote this today, because we really need this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Kristin Boyd. I'm the Mobility Manager at the Cape Cod Regional Transit Authority, and I'm thinking about things in a totally different way. Yes, housing is very important, but one of the things that's difficult with transportation on the Cape is where the housing is, and having the housing be close to a transportation center is something that would make my job a lot easier if all housing was close to transportation, because one of the things, we talk about the cars, and we talk about the parking spaces, but what if these people didn't want a car? What if they want to utilize public transportation? They're close to downtown. They're close to our transportation center. They can access the intercity buses that can get them to Boston. They can access our buses that can get them to the supermarket. What if? What if we changed the way we think about how we get around, and now you've built something that somebody might be able to do it without having a car and a younger professional that's trying to make it, and it's just a different opportunity to think about where you're placing development and an opportunity that maybe the family could have one car instead of two cars. It's just thinking differently. And as far as friends coming over, wintertime parking, $5 at the Regional Transit Authority. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hello, my name is Ryan Johnson. I am a new resident of Centerville, and after a few years of graduating college, I thought I only had two choices. One, either keep living with my mom, or two, join with many of the people of my generation and leave in Cape Cod. Luckily, my place of employment provided, pointed me toward the Housing Assistance Corporation of Cape Cod. Through Hack, I attended a first-time homebuyer class, and suddenly, I had more than those two options. I'm proud to say that because of Hack, I learned of various programs I could take advantage of, and I am now the proud owner of a home in Centerville. If it had not, this is not a handout that Hack had given me. It was a hand up. If it weren't for Hack, I probably wouldn't be here near my family. I am gainfully employed and contributing to the local society. I pay my taxes, and most importantly, I get to stay near my family. Please support the efforts of the Housing Assistance Corporation. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Betsy Rumbaugh, and I'm a real estate assistant at Housing Assistance Corp. I am on the front line every day answering the phone from Cape Codders who are in the workforce, who need a place to live. There's a new issue evolving that I've picked up in the past six weeks or so, where a lot of houses are selling that have been rentals for years and years, because it's a seller's market. A lot of people call because they, they're so shocked at the rental prices. They may have lowered rental rates because they've been there for a while, but they have sticker shock, and they can't believe the prices, and then, secondly, they can't believe that there's no, there aren't any rentals. They're desperate. They're signing up for the first-time homebuyer's class, but then we have an issue where there's not a lot of homes for sale in their price range. So, we really, really have a serious problem here, where the people who work hard every day, we deal with people who are 80% of the area median income. They are rock stars. They have great credit. They have good jobs, and so many people think that if they're in my neighborhood, they're going to trash the place. This doesn't happen. They're good, working people with families. But I think we really need to allow for more housing, and Ridgewood Avenue could use some nice-looking houses. All of Hyannis could, and it's got to start somewhere. It might as well start there with Housing Assistance Corp. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? All those in favor closing the public hearing? And that is unanimous. Counsel, discussion, questions on this item? Counsel Flores?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few questions. How is Hack financing the overall development of the units?
I'll start off, and Alisa may fill in, but in a nutshell, it has to be a permanent bank loan. That's why the number of units relates to feasibility and the rent pro forma, including the two, the two affordable rents, as well as the market rents. But again, our whole goal, and with small units, is that they are going to be a reasonable amount that would be affordable by folks who may be above the 80%, but call it workforce or any other label. It's going to be that target market. So, it's basically conventional financing.
Through a local Cape Cod bank or through?
I don't believe we have definite commitments, but I would suspect so.
Yeah, that is the plan, to go through a local bank, and this is, I mentioned this is sort of a different model than Hack's done in the past. Typically, Hack's done developments through low-income housing tax credits, and part of the reason we're looking for this, looking at this different model, a smaller-scale development with some market helping to support some of the affordable units in development, is because of how long it takes to get a low-income housing tax credit project done. It can take up to five or more years from start to finish. So, we will be doing this with traditional financing, again, hopefully through a local bank. We also do plan on approaching the CPC for some assistance for the two affordable units as well. So, that's something that we'll be asking for at a future date.
The six market-rate units, what will be the average rental monthly rate?
We don't have it exact yet. We think the one-bedrooms are going to be somewhere in the range of $1,400, and then the two-bedroom, around $1,850, maybe a little higher than that. We're still sort of fine-tuning our numbers on those as well, so.
And as far as the two affordable units, I wish they were eight affordable units, to be quite frank, but I understand the financing.
Right.
How will those folks be chosen? Is that through a lottery? Is that through this endless list that goes on for 20 years? How will that happen?
Exactly. That'll be through an open lottery. That'll be open to Barnstable residents, exactly. Anyone who income qualifies could enter that lottery.
And the average per square foot prices approximately, from the architect's perspective? Have you done?
The construction cost?
And what's the average square foot?
I think it was around $110.
$110?
Yeah, just on the building, not on the entire site, but.
$110 is very low.
Well, there's a hope to do it modular, which helps.
Oh, it's going to be a modular building?
We believe so. That's, again, nothing is 100% definite, but very, very likely.
So, if it's modular, I assume Bob Brennan will be the provider of the modules, I would suspect, because this is similar to what he built in Dennis, similar to what we built on Pleasant Street, which I applaud. I think it's terrific. I think, you know, the quality of that will be good.
At this point, we're going to, the plan is to do a full open bid, to look at a number of different modular facilities, as well as stick builders as well, and just, and compare costs, just like any other development. But our early thinking is that modular would allow us to cut down on the costs of construction to be able to make this happen.
Well, I think, just my final comment, you know, I think the positives outweigh the negatives on this. I think we are entirely in need of affordable housing. I'm not quite sure if $1,800 or $1,600 is still considered affordable housing for a lot of people, but nonetheless, I think it's a, I think it's a good project. I think it's a good model, so I'll be supporting this.
Counsel Eric Cullen?
Hi, yes, thank you. Well, I have a few comments to make. I'm happy to see a new day dawning with Hack with regard to Hyannis, where there's a $1,600 annual payment in lieu of taxes that contributes to emergency services, the fire department. I'm also really happy that we're not putting more low-income housing in Hyannis in an area that's already economically depressed. I'm thankful for your vision, Alisa, and I think your leadership at Hack shines in this particular example. For those that are opposed to it, I would, I don't know if you've had the opportunity to look at Heritage Sands in Dennis, but this Union Studios, they developed other projects, or they designed other projects for Rob Brennan, including the Pleasant Street project that's about to go in over here in Hyannis, and I would encourage you to drive over there and check it out if you're concerned about the way the buildings are going to look, because they're beautiful, and they will help your property value. The parking is a concern. I'm hoping you guys can address that. But as far as traffic, I mean, you have buses and Bucklers screaming down that road at all hours anyway, so, I mean, I think that the point's taken, but the problem was there before this development would go in. Is there street parking there is a question for me, and I think that's pretty much it. I'm really, I'm really thankful for the investment in Hyannis. I think that, you know, Hyannis is definitely very close to my heart, because I live here, and I've seen a lot of things happen in my neighborhood development-wise that are not what I want to see, and I would be very happy to have something like this bringing up the property value in my, in my neighborhood. So, could you just speak to the traffic thing, long and short of it? Thank you.
Well, I'll lead off, and anything else that anybody wants to contribute is fine, but I was actually going to say that I, I and also Hack always respect comments from neighbors. We understand them, and we treat them with respect. We understand them and we treat them with respect. I was going to make a couple of the points that you made, the exist, the problem, if it's a problem, is already there, and we're not creating it, number one. Number two, if there are concerns from any of the town's safety officials, which didn't come up at our site plan review, when all of those officials, police, fire, and everybody do participate, I'm not saying that that's the last word, but my immediate thought, being familiar with developments all over the place in my practice, is, you know, there are various traffic calming mechanisms that the town could implement that always have some costs, but that, you know, I don't think are super expensive. There could be a variety of traffic calming measures, whether it's some new curbing with, without changing aspects of sidewalk, whether it's some speed bumps in various locations. I'm not a big fan of speed bumps, but I know that they're important. Where I live, there are speed bumps, and I have to go over six of them every, every day when I go just a mile and a half to my office, from, from Comerquid to my office. So again, the point may be well-taken, but not to stop or reduce the project, but to have the town work on it if it's considered to be that type of a, of a problem. Thank you.
And the only thing I'd add about, your question about on-street parking is there would be no on-street parking. There isn't now, and as property manager, that's not something that we would allow. We think for a development of this size, there's certainly adequate parking. It's not something we're asking for a waiver for. So we are, we are putting in the parking that would be allowed under, for this number of units for any other development in town. And I think as property manager, we would certainly encourage, if guests were coming over, as Kristin mentioned, that they would need to park off-site. At the transportation center would be a great option, but yeah, there wouldn't, there would not be any on-street parking allowed.
Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, and I appreciate that you allowed me to read it, this item into the minutes tonight. But the actual counselor of Precinct Nine is Mr. Counselor James Tinsley. I just want to point that out, and he is the sponsor of this effort. The, you know, on my way over here tonight at six o'clock, I did a pilgrimage ride through Ridgewood, and I do a lot of business with Mr. Buckler and the good folks there. Let's face it, and this is in response to Josh and to Stephen, you spoke very, very, very well. But let's face it, that is a commercial, across the street is really a large commercial area with some very fine businesses, but you also have a, a big dirt lot that's sitting there. This project will do nothing but increase your home value. More people will want to, to live on Ridgewood Avenue. Right now, it doesn't feel like a neighborhood, and this will act as an anchor to create a, a neighborhood sense of well-being, and that by itself is going to be able to slow down the traffic, because people are going to be aware that they're in a neighborhood, they're not in a commercial district racing to get their business done for the day. This is a terrific project. Again, I thank you Housing Assistance Corporation. We need this kind of hybrid type of financing in order to move the housing forward. I use the word now attainable rather than affordable, and it's still high-priced, there's no way around it, but it's, at least this is a way to give people more options and keep more young people here in the Cape. All my three daughters have left the Cape, so this is great to keep our people here. It's desperate need. Thank you.
Counselor Dagwana?
Yes, I also think that this is a very creative project. I am concerned that when we talk about affordable housing, that, I heard someone come up and speak about the homeless. I don't think this would be housing that those that are homeless could really afford, and we, we need housing that, that, this is a good project. I don't want to say anything against your project, but looking at the town's need for real affordable housing, housing that people can afford that have one job, not three jobs, is a big issue here, and we do want to try to keep our young people here. But I want to speak on behalf of the people who live on the street and the complaints that I've been getting. This project's not going up in my neighborhood, so I don't really have a lot to say about it, but people who live in the neighborhood have been contacting me, and I just, some of the things you've already spoken about, and I just want to reiterate them again because I've been hearing a lot about it. Issues such as how does the commercial site and dealership on one end of the street and the industrial business on the other end of the street is going to affect the residential area of these units came up. Secondly, parking, as we've already heard, came up. And when I travel around the neighborhood, I see very few places where there's, these are going to be eight units, I see very few places where there's one car. Most people have at least two cars. This may change that, because people will be close to transportation, they'll have a chance to, you know, catch a bus or whatever, and this may change. But in reality, what I've seen at some of these units, so we're talking about eight units, at least sixteen cars, that possibility, people moving in, that may be a restriction. You only have one parking space, that's it, and they may have to address that issue in terms of having a second car. And I'm concerned about guest parking, you know, where do your guests, if they have guests, where, where are they gonna, gonna park? And that's not my, my concern, it is the people who live in the neighborhood, so I'm bringing this to you from them. They're concerned about having sidewalks and crosswalks, and I would just say that hopefully that the abuddists had enough, had enough opportunities for feedback to, to express their concerns. And the only opposition I have to the project, basically, I would like to see a little bit more payment in terms of taxes for this, this pilot project. But thank you for what you've offered. I think it's great of the pilot. This is very innovative. We don't have anything like that in town around, so it is something different, and it's nice to see that Hack is, is trying to, you know, provide something for the town as well. So those are my feedback from your neighbors.
Counsel Dagwana, did you want anything in particular addressed, or you just wanted to pass along that feedback?
I just want to pass along, and they can address some of that. I mean, some of the residents are here, so, you know, just to kind of, you know, address some of those issues. We do need housing badly here.
Just, just very, very brief response on parking. There is, as the, the person from the Regional Transit Authority mentioned, that is very nearby, and as you mentioned yourself, Counselor, the fact that it's so near to the public transportation does likely mitigate the number of cars. The other thing is that with management and leases, we will control that, and Hack is a good manager, they have a good record, and we take that seriously, as do the residents. You know, it's a good mix. It's, it's the six-market units and two affordable, and the residents themselves are going to want to keep it in a functioning way. And as was already stated, we do have the requisite number. We didn't get a waiver, we didn't ask for a waiver from the requisite, from the number of parking spaces. On the, the street and the commercial and all of that, I really already addressed it. I really repeat what I said in terms of traffic calming measures, things like that. And just one semi-related comment that I forgot in terms of Mr. Merlosina. If you look at the site plan, the driveway, which is where the headlights would come from, actually are opposite a vacant lot. They're not opposite his house or houses at all. Just wanted to point that out.
Counsel Wallace?
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. About this parking, eight units, thirteen spaces, I think I counted, isn't it typical that management of these types of locations usually assign parking spaces to the tenants so that they know exactly what they have to park in before they actually even move into the place, or as part of the lease agreement that they're, they're looking at?
I'll turn that over to, to Elisa, I believe so, but I don't want.
Exactly, and that would, that would be our, our plan as well.
So any overflow from additional cars that roommates or spouses or even children may have, they would understand that beforehand and make a decision probably, well, wouldn't it be logical to assume that they would make a decision whether they wanted to live there based on all the conditions that exist, and if they have no problem walking two blocks to the transportation area or some other location? So I don't, I don't really understand what the problem is with the parking. And it also appears to me is that there's enough space on this property to actually add additional parking if there was, and I don't know if the architect could see that, but it looks like on the other side of the building, but, yeah, which would be the north side of the triplex, north end of the triplex there? Is there any way to get cars around the back there, just in case that you might want to add some spaces, or that option would be available to you?
It's, it's possible. I think the goal with our design was to, to create as much green space as possible. I think it would be, I'll, I'll let Brian speak to that if you, if you have any thoughts on adding on the site plan and, and areas where we may be able to add more parking. But again, the whole, the goal, first of all, the goal would be to try to have this be a location where people who would maybe consider not having two cars because they are downtown, I mean, that's, one of our goals is, again, this whole idea of smart growth and attracting people who can live, work, and play right near downtown Hyannis. But I'll, I'll let Brian talk about the site plan.
Sure, Dave. Yeah, so we, we have looked at, at different options, and, and the parking was something that was debated quite a bit, and we thought we came up with what is the most efficient use of the space for, for parking, and then also providing what is sufficient based upon, on zoning and, and the one-point-five space per unit. If we did look for additional parking, I guess my word of caution would be, it would be some sort of overflow parking that could still be pervious. Again, we're trying to reduce impervious cover as well. For those, I'm sure many of you know that pavement is a big contributor to pollutants from stormwater runoff, so trying to keep that impervious cover down certainly was another one of our goals as well, and that's part of managing the stormwater runoff and putting it under the parking lots. But, and I think the suggestion to the north, that would present some challenges based upon the, with the abutting property and the proximity to the rear deck. So I, I'm not sure we could fit them in that space, but we have looked at maybe along the Axis Drive. But again, it would just be overflow, not, not formalized parking.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Schnepp?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you for your wonderful presentation. I want to echo what Counsel Hebert said, is that I think a project of this size, scope, design will definitely add to the value in the neighborhood and I think will promote future changes in the existing uses. And so I could see this as a very great companion to the Sea Captain's project that was approved several months ago in bringing really needed housing into Hyannis. Again, I, I echo Counsel Dagwana in my concern for affordable housing. I'm glad that there's two units in there, but I, I'm also aware of how expensive it is to develop housing, that the infrastructure you need to convert this vacant lot into eight units is, is no cheap thing, and to, to make sure that it's done in a quality way. So I, I strongly support this project, and again, I commend you for the work that you have put into it.
Counsel Raprasetti?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. I will be supporting this item. I just have a couple of concerns and to Mr. Lamoyne's comment, I don't think anybody should be taking a left off Ridgewood onto Route 28, but hopefully that'll be cured with some redo in that area. And to Mr. Merlosina, you live across the street, I don't know, or, or you reside or have property across the street, I'm not sure how long you've been there, or how long you've looked at this site, and you're offering now to purchase it, maybe you should have thought of that a few years ago. My concern is with regards to safety, and if there's no sidewalk on the east or on the west side of the property, it's only on the east side of the prop, or the east side of Ridgewood?
There's a sidewalk on both sides, I believe.
Is it on both sides?
Yes.
Oh, okay, that's good then. I, I was concerned that there wouldn't be, wait a minute, someone's saying, no, there isn't a sidewalk in front of this. So the west side, which is in front of this property, right?
Correct. There's sidewalk on the west side which abuts the, the project.
And brings you down to Center Street.
I believe across the street is, it's a vacant, it's a vacant lot.
So there is a sidewalk in front of this property?
Yes.
Okay. The, and I'm glad to see in the agreement that the construction cannot exceed two years from when you hold, hold a permit, because no one likes to see a, a project languish for years and years and years, so I'm glad to see that. Are you planning to sublease the units? Because there is mention of that in the regulatory agreement, so I'm concerned that there might be some subleasing going on, Airbnbs, what's, what's the, the?
We would be leasing only to year-round tenants.
So there is no subleasing that can occur, because it does state in here that you can sublease, it's up to the developer to sublease. Section on page ten of our agenda, number seven.
The only sublease that we were considering is to an employer who wanted year-round housing for their employees, but it wouldn't, once the tenants are in, assuming that we didn't go with that model and we were renting to individuals, no, the individuals, it'll be year-round housing, they won't be allowed to sublease. It'll be in the lease.
All right, that's good to hear. And let's see. Who's going to be the clerk of the works on the project? Who will be overseeing the, the builder?
That hasn't been decided yet.
And who traditionally does it for Housing Assistance?
For all of our projects, we go out to bid for the contractor through an open bid process.
So the contractor oversees himself? There's no one overseeing the contractor?
Well, if I may, it, it's possible that there would be a clerk of the works, but it's definitely, you know, a step that's not been committed to yet. However, certainly with lenders in the past, and as typical in these developments, they have their own construction monitoring, and, you know, they watch it pretty closely before they, you know, disperse the money on the drawdowns for each stage. So, you know, and, and we have a staff, there may not be a construction expert per se, but we do have professionals such as in the Energy Department and, and the folks in the Real Estate Development Office, who certainly will be out there at the job meetings and inspecting, even if they, even if they're not formally a quote-unquote clerk of the works.
All right, okay. Well, I wish you luck, and thank you.
Could I just add, I would like to correct that there is sidewalks on both sides of the road. We just looked at the, the street view, thanks to Google. Thanks.
Any other counselors? Counsel Tinsley?
Thank you. I, I'm sorry. I generally like to, to be the last to speak if, if my name's at the bottom of something. What I find highly interesting, as a side note, after sitting up here all these years, even if we may disagree sometimes, have different political views, every counselor who has spoke has ticked off one of the things on my list. It's, it's kind of interesting. So when we do look at something as important as this, we often have a similar mind, at least on what we are concerned with. Just an example, when we, we met, one of my concerns was subleasing. I even told you that would come up when you sat here, because I'm not a fan of it, and, and so I'm glad you addressed that. Density, when you build in density, is always an issue. Where I live, there are eight condo units right across the street from my house, so I thought of that when, when one of the concerns was the headlights. Though we know where this driveway is, I have them coming in and out for the last twenty-four years. I've had headlights coming into my front window. But you know what? I have great neighbors who take care of their property and, and are, are concerned with the neighborhood and with what happens in our neighborhood, so that's okay. I have good blinds. So it, it's, and, and the parking, we've got what we, we require from every other development in, in our town, so we're doing what we're supposed to do. It's got a unique financing method that I really think we need to give the opportunity so we can see more and more and more of this. I happen to, I don't live on Ridgewood, but I drive down it every single day, three, four, five, ten times a day for my job, in between the three dealerships that I work at, except for Thursdays and Sundays. So I'm very well, I know that area, besides it being my precinct, and I too, like many others up here, listen to the concerns of the neighborhood, but I think you will, you will truly see as this goes on that you have such a good neighbor in Hack, you have developers with a history of excellent work and excellent management, and even to, to address the homelessness issue. What happens when you have projects like this, you have an individual who has, is, is in a, a low-rent apartment, who's worked hard and kept going, they can move up into this unit, and what it does is it opens up their unit. So there's a ripple effect when you have projects like this to help everyone along the line. So we just can't. So we just can't look at that one person who's going to rent this unit, we're going to look at what are they leaving and what are they opening up for that individual who needs that space. Obviously, I support this, and I really thank my fellow counselors at this point because of, truly, you've just ticked off everything I had written down here. Thank you so much, and I really hope you all support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Crocker.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming forward. Thank you for bringing such a professional design for our opportunity, for our citizens. I think it's a new day for Hack. I remember being on this board when we asked Hack to tell us what you rent, and you wouldn't even give us the real list of what you rented. So I don't think you have this long, glowing history, but I think with new leadership, you're really headed in the right direction. So I applaud this initiative. I think an issue that can go away for us here is a discussion about two of the items, that being subleasing and the parking spaces. Subleasing comes up about the short-term subleasing for the magnitude of the online people. But you also must remember, as a landlord, you may have a single person go into a unit, may have to take their brother and sister in for a while, may marry and bring someone in. So you will be facing some leasing, you just have to recognize what type of subleasing is going to be acceptable to you as you manage these units. Lastly, I think we have to try to get to a point where you tell us how you intend to assign parking spots. So you have two two-units, and you have six one-bedroom units. Nobody would like you to suggest that the affordable units are not going to be considered for as many parking spots as anyone else. Nobody would like you to tell us that the, nobody has asked you whether the affordable units fall as one-bedroom or two-bedrooms. So I'd like to know how you intend to find the two affordable units. I also would like to know if you intend to assign by the size of the unit parking spaces, so that then I could perhaps say, if you went, every two-bedroom gets two parking spaces, every, the six one-bedrooms get six, that's 10, there's three guest spaces. Tell me something so that when somebody knocks on your door as a tenant, they'll have an idea if it really works for them, because you will have treated them upfront with what the issue is, and we know that the affordable units are treated no differently. So if you could zero in on that aspect for me, that would be much appreciated.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we haven't gone in-depth into exactly how the parking assignment would work, but I think you'd have a priority based on the size of the unit, getting, you know, with the potential for having, depending on who is there, if they have two cars, to have two spots. And then the one-bedrooms, you know, again, it's going to depend on who, you know, how many cars are, we're going to have to manage how many cars each of the tenants have, but that's certainly something that we're going to look into and come up with the plan on. In terms of the question on which units would be afford?
Don't go past this one, because you're not really answering it right on the mark. So let's go over it again.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, the first guy rushes in, he wants to pay 1,800, he's taking a two-bedroom unit, you give him two spots. Last guy rushes in, wants to pay 1,800 again, he gets two spots. That leaves you nine and six units to go.
That's right.
And you haven't even told me how many affordable units or where the affordables are going. Are they going into one-bedrooms? Two-bedrooms?
The one-bedrooms.
No, it is in the, okay.
I'm asking directly.
Yeah, yeah, they're the one-bedrooms.
I'm asking to make a commitment to the people who can't read the paperwork.
I understand.
This is a public hearing, so.
No, thank you.
So now we've got six units, and of the six units, two of them you're telling me are going to the affordable people. Do they get the equal share of the parking spots that remain? Or will they be the ones who pay the price?
They would be treated exactly equally to the, as the other one-bedroom units.
So all the one-bedrooms will get the same number of parking spots? And you're saying yes, right? We agree, let's just agree, let's just agree, let's get it over with.
Yeah.
And all the two-bedrooms get two parking spots?
Right, that is the plan.
And that leaves us, just so everybody's clear, that leaves us three guest spots on the site.
Yeah, right.
Terrific, now we know.
Great, thank you, appreciate that.
Makes sense, thank you.
Anyone else? All those in favor moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-108. This is a roll call, two-thirds vote.
Councillors. Crocker, James.
See, that's why I had to know, I'm first.
Yes.
Column.
You've always been a wimp. Yes.
Dagwan.
Yes.
Flores.
Yes.
Rap Grissette.
Yes.
Hebert.
Yes.
Levecq.
In favor.
Neary.
Yes.
Schnep.
Yes.
Stein-Hilber.
Yes.
Tinsley.
Yes.
Wallace.
Yes.
It's 12 yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you all, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please, under old business, read item 2018-138?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is item 2018-138, second reading, it may be acted upon, appointments to a board, committee, or commission. Resolve that the Town Council appoints the following individuals to a multiple-member board, committee, or commission. Licensing authority, Nancy Carlson-Lidman, 23 Tupelo Road, Marson's Mills, as an associate member to a term expiring 6/30/2020.
Second.
I have a second. Could we please take the conversations outside, please? Thank you. I have a second on this. Any counselor discussion? All those in favor moving the question? And that's unanimous. This is item 2018-138, appointments to a board, committee, or commission. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. All right, at this time, I'd like to invite up our Town Manager Mark Els and our Finance Director Mark Milne, who are going to give us a brief overview of our fiscal year 2019 operating budget before we read these orders in for a public hearing on May 17.
Good evening, and thank you, Mark Els, Town Manager. This is our overview of the fiscal year 2019 operating budget. And I'll do a brief introductory, and Director of Finance, Mark Milne, will give a summarized overview of the various aspects of the operating budget. The fiscal year 2019 operating budget addresses the town's responsibilities to provide efficient and effective service for our residents. These budgets align with the Town Council's strategic plan goals, with the programs and services proposed for the next fiscal year. Town Council's strategic plan emphasizes the importance of quality of life, strong financial management is a priority for our community. Two of these principles are at the core of each of our budget's decisions that we make. And I'll turn it over to Director Milne to go through the details of many of the changes that you are already familiar with, as we review the administrative code and the restructuring, certainly the alignment of our strategic plan and the priorities of our community, and some of the changes that we'll see in the upcoming FY 2019 operating budget. Thank you. And our budget book, for all of you, we put the band on the front, and we're excited. I mean, we've gone through a, truly, we've gone through a good working relationship on the educational aspects of our public schools, on the extracurriculars and athletics, and so now we need to give the band its due, and, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, councilors. In your packet tonight, I provided you copies of the slides, as well as a budget in brief, which is much easier to read than that large document, but we do this every year for the general public and for your benefit, but I wanted to give you that tonight, and I'll briefly touch upon that. Again, looking at the budget this year, as the Town Manager mentioned, this budget is designed to address six, seven specific areas with the reorganization. The reorganization of departments, divisions, programs, and services with an emphasis on the following areas that the Town Manager has talked about previously. It also provides full funding for a civilian dispatch force, and consolidation of the Hyannis Fire District Dispatch, and additional funding for the school department for their social, emotional, academic development, and special education programs. We continue to maintain, one of our priorities is to continue to maintain a strong financial foundation with this budget, and we believe this budget does. Currently, we have a AAA bond rating, we think this budget will allow us to maintain that bond rating. We have a structurally balanced general fund budget, we have strong reserve fund levels, we're committing another $4 million to our capital program that you approved at the last meeting. We're directing more funding to our other post-employment benefits liabilities, so we're continuing to address that, which is being closely watched by bond rating agencies. And there are no property tax overrides being requested to fund the operating budget next year. The reorganization creates an asset management program under the Town Manager operation, transferring two full-time positions from the Finance Department. This addresses several different areas within the strategic plan, and it improves management over our physical assets and addresses work currently not being accomplished. The reorganization also places the conservation program and parking programs under the Planning and Development Department, again, addressing several key areas of the Town Council's strategic plan, and an improved customer service focus. The reorganization also creates an Assistant Director of Planning and Development and an Economic Development Coordinator positions. Again, this to address a better, provide better alignment with the strategic plan, as well as address succession planning in this department. We're also creating a purchasing agent position in Finance to improve our customer service focus, addressing our succession planning in this department, as well as reducing a point of exposure that we have. The reorganization also places the Health Department or Division under the Inspection Services Department, again, better aligning it with our strategic plan, improving our customer service focus, eliminating efficiencies, inefficiencies, and redundancies. And it disestablishes the Regulatory Services Department and eliminates the Director of Regulatory Services. Finally, the reorganization removes the Marine and Environmental Affairs Division from the Community Services Department and places it in its own department, again, giving this department a seat at the senior manager's table, better aligning it with our strategic plan, and reducing another point of exposure. It also moves one administrative position to the Community Services Department, addressing the area of communication within your strategic plan. The civilian dispatch force. We are fully funding, this budget will fully fund nine civilian dispatchers, in addition to three more completely paid for by the Hyannis Fire District. This will improve our response time, and it also improves a public safety area, as we'll have more sworn officers in the field and not doing dispatch anymore. It also reduces overtime costs in the Police Department, and being a primary public safety answering point, we're eligible for state grants, and we have $202,000 grant next year to help offset the cost of our 911 operation. Summarizing all the staffing changes as a result of the reorganization, we're looking at an increase of 1.8 full-time equivalents that are completely offset by some efficiency gains that we're taking advantage of within the assessing operations. A new Director of Assessing has reexamined the workflow processes in the assessing office, and we're eliminating an office manager in a property listing position. The office manager position is currently vacant, and opportunities exist within the organization for the property lister to find employment with the town. So those will offset the gains that we see from the reorganization. And we have new initiatives, creating four full-time equivalents. That's mainly the three full-time dispatchers being added to the Police Department. We also have some program enhancements in the senior center, in the area of evening enrichment programs, and we have some water quality monitoring specialists in the Health Division that are going to be seasonal positions. Looking at the school staffing changes, there's seven new positions in the school department. One is a full-time social, emotional, academic development coach, along with six full-time special education assistants. This will help the school department address their vision, which is to educate the whole child in a safe, healthy learning environment, where students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Looking at the tax levy for next year, we begin with $116.9 million base that's subject to Proposition 2.5, which allows the town to increase the levy by $2.9 million. We're looking at about $110 million in new property growth currently, which will raise an additional $950 in new taxes. We have the Cape Cod Commission Environmental Tax, which is a voter-approved tax override years ago that is added to the levy every year. And we have one more year of debt exclusions for the Barnstable High School that we have, and then we're done, and then next year, we're done with the Barnstable Intermediate School, and they go away. This budget does not include any debt overrides for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School project. Those will probably come online first year fiscal year '20. We won't see the full impact of that project until 2021. So we're looking at a tax levy limit of about $122 million. We're going to set aside $915,000 for abatements and statutory exemptions for things like elderly exemptions and veterans exemptions and things like that. So we have $121.7 million available for property taxes for operations, which is about a $4 million increase over the current year. State aid is going up about $380,000, local receipts $160,000, excise taxes about $130,000. We're looking at a grand total of about $6.45 million in revenue growth for the general fund budget, which gives us total revenue of $171.85, $850,000. And about 70% of that is raised in property taxes, and a second largest source being state aid, which provides about another 11%. So over 80% of our budget is funded through property taxes and state aid. This is how the general fund budget looks like by major area. Education is up 3.1 million or 4.2%. Other requirements, which is principally employee benefits and debt service, is increasing 1.9 million. And the municipal operating budget is up 1.4 million or 3.8%. That includes those three Hyannis Fire District dispatchers that'll be paid for by the Fire District entirely. Removing those, the municipal budget is up 3.4%. There's really no change in the distribution of the general fund budget between major area. Education consumes about 46% of our general fund budget still. These are the major cost drivers of the budget for next year. The $6.4 million increase, contractual obligations, net of all of our turnover in staff, is about almost 2.4 million. Employee benefits are going up 1.2 million. Technology, software, textbooks, curriculum supplies across all departments, $622,000. Debt service is up almost half a million dollars. School assessments for Cape Cod Tech, charter schools, school choice, up $431,000, and so forth. We have several reductions on the right-hand side, other fixed cost area, we see some savings of $63,000, reduction to the transfer of the Capital Trust Fund of $119,000, and across the board, reductions in operating expenses of $162,000. Also notice, we continue our commitment of increasing our snow and ice budget by another $125,000, with a multi-year plan to continue working on increasing that budget to reduce the deficits that we incur on an annual basis. Here's the education budget by system. The local school operations are $70,637,000. Regional school districts going up to $3,682,000 or $146,000. Commonwealth charter school assessments are up $151,000, 4.9%, and school choice is up $133,000. Commonwealth charters and school choice are estimates at this point in time, the state has not given us the final numbers. Those numbers are adjusted quarterly as the year goes by, based on where students go, they transfer back and forth, and they don't have the final numbers until the second quarter of the fiscal year, and then we'll have our final numbers. But they're going to be pretty close to what these are. So we're looking at $3.183 million for an increase in the education budget, in a total education budget, and our local school system is about 90% of that. This is the cost per student by system. We go through an exercise every year where we take the total cost of educating a student in Barnstable, and we reduce it by, and we allocate all the fixed costs, like employee benefits and debt service, to that operation, and then we reduce it by any state aid that we receive for edu- we receive for education and specifically. And we end up with about a cost of, a net cost of educating a student of $14,234. Compared to the regional school district, which is what the assessment they send to us, which is after their state aid that they receive, it's cost about $20,571 to educate a student. Commonwealth charters are less because we still receive charter school aid from the state, which helps keep the costs down of educating a student in a Commonwealth charter school. And in school choice, we, we get about the same amount of money per student, $5,800 for, for the cost that we have to pay for a student that leaves our district. And we have about 197 students that are participating in school choice that go to other schools surrounding districts, and we, it's about $5,800 on average for those 197 students. So grand total is about $13,600 when you average them all together. This is what our other requirements budget looks like. Employee benefits and debt service are the cost drivers here. They consume over 80% of the budget in employee benefit under this category. We have continued to work with the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group in trying to find ways to keep the cost of health insurance from climbing. It's, as you know, it is one area of, in all of our lives that continues to exceed the rate of inflation. More recently, we've implemented health savings plans, high deductible health savings plan through the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group. We have over 50 employees now participating in that plan. It's been a very popular plan. It's only in its second year. Enrollment is taking place right now, and we're seeing more people switch over to that. So that's helping keep some of the costs down because it's a lower premium. Our debt service is going up because we have implemented a more aggressive capital program, and we have issued a large bond last year associated with the fiscal year 17 capital program, or 18 capital program, and these are the, the debt payments will be going up in accord, accordingly. The good news is our snow and ice deficit is down this year by $181,000. So that was some good news for us. And we have a new reserve fund that we're proposing this year, a town council reserve fund. This is not an expenditure. This is a reserve fund. We're putting money aside for any event that, for an extraordinary and unforeseen event may arise, it'll allow us to act more quickly in responding to that event. For example, the sandy neck circumstances that took place this year. A department can come in and ask for a transfer from the town council reserve. It can be acted upon at the initial reading, and the funds become available immediately. There's no 30-day waiting period. Right now, we would have to come through with, we'd have to have two readings and then a 30-day waiting period after the second appropriation is approved. So it hands, it ties the hands of the department trying to respond to any emergency. This will, this provides us a little more flexibility. And again, you have to approve the transfer. The history of the other requirements budget, this is what it looks like. As you can see, debt service and employee benefits drive this area of the budget, and it will continue to drive this area of the budget as we become more aggressive in our capital programming, allocating more resources to that. We're going to have more debt service and employee benefits. We continue to work in trying to control the cost of employee benefits. Prescription medications are the single most expensive cost driver in the, in health insurance. And I think I read today that there's one particular medication that can cost a particular system up to 30% to 35% of all their prescription medication cost, one, one drug in and of itself. I think it's for, for, it might be for diabetes. Municipal operations department, department looks like this. The police department budget is the single largest department, of course, and so it has the largest dollar increase. It also has the largest percentage increase as a result, mainly because of the three additional Hyannis Fire dispatchers that we're bringing out to do the dispatching for Hyannis Fire District. So that, that inflates the cost of the operation. But again, it's being paid for by the Hyannis Fire District. Licensing department is down considerably as a result of the reorganization and the reductions from that department and transfers out. We restated all of these departments to reflect the reorganization, so you wouldn't see large fluctuations in the budgets. The budgets would have looked like they've gone up 100% in some departments and down 300% in others. So we went back through an exercise and restated all the fiscal year '18 budgets and the actual numbers for fiscal year '17 that you see in your budget book to reflect this reorganization, to avoid any of those spikes either up or down. Planning and development is up 11%, naturally because of two brand-new positions that we're proposing in that department. Everything else is relatively the equal across the board, anywhere from a 2% to a 4% increase. Total budget's up 3.8%. And again, about, about 80% of the budget, more than 80% of the budget is directed towards line operations with less than 20% on administrative type, type functions and legislative type functions. Here's the projected tax rates and tax bills excluding the fire districts for next year. We're presuming, we're assuming about a 2.5% increase in the overall town's valuation. Property, the, the market is doing better. We're seeing that in, in sales data, and so our, our property valuations are expected to go up by, by about 2.5%. And so which, which impacts the tax rate minimally. We'll end up, even though we're, we're looking at a tax levy increase of about $4.2 million, it's only going to go up about 8 cents because the property valuation's going to go up. So on the right chart shows what the median property tax bill will look like, what we're estimating it to look like by village. Barnstable Village has the highest median property tax value of all five villages, seven villages of the district. So the property tax bill increases range are the highest in Barnstable and the lowest in Hyannis. Hyannis, we're looking at about a $46 median tax bill increase or about $6 a month. Townwide, the increase is about $71. Estimated property tax allocation, this is the exercise that we go through the last several pages in this handout, show you the steps that we use to come up with this property tax allocation, where we take our fixed costs or our other requirements and allocate them out to the operating departments and then credit back any revenue generated, any state aid attributed to that operation, to, to arrive at a figure that shows you what the approximate tax, where your approximate tax dollars go. So about every 66 cents of every dollar goes to funding education and includes the local system, the charter school systems, the regional school system. So it's about 66 cents of every dollar. About 15 cents of every dollar, dollar goes to our police operations and 6 cents to public works and 4 cents to community services. That's a bulk of your tax dollar to those four operations. You would think public works would be more, but we give them credit for all of our motor vehicle excise tax because we use that to maintain our roads. We put a lot of money into our roads, and the motor vehicle excise tax allows us to do that. The enterprise fund budgets, we're looking at a 5.6% increase in solid waste. The largest cost driver here is we're providing some funding in the event that we cannot find an alternative solution for the disposal of recyclables. So we're providing additional funds for the disposal of recycling if it's needed. That is a new development, as you've been informed previously, that we are now being charged for the disposal of that as the market has, has gone away temporarily, we hope. The water pollution control, no major changes here. These are just operational increases associated with contractual obligations and employee benefits. The water supply enterprise fund actually has a large reduction to it. With the implementation of the Mary Dunwell Treatment Facility, we will now, now have to buy as much water from neighboring water districts as we've had in the past. So we have a large budget reduction there. The Marina Enterprise Fund is down because of a decrease in debt service, as well as the reorganization's impacting that a little bit. We, we're moving a piece of a position onto the general fund as the responsibilities of one individual now crosses funds, some of the, some of the things that they have to, that they're going to be in charge of managing. The Sandy Neck Enterprise Fund is up considerably. This is, this includes a one-time reimbursement to the general fund for the $60,000 for the sand replenishment this year. That's included in there. And then we're also including a, an additional $125,000 for sand replenishment if needed. So we wanted to give them the budget if needed for any, another similar event that might occur again next year, hopefully not, but at least now they'll have adequate funding, hopefully, to address that. So that's what's driving the cost there. We're also giving them $40,000 to raise the gatehouse to prevent future flooding. We've had a couple of flooding events this year, so we're going to, we're going to raise the gatehouse out there. So that's one-time funding. The golf course is up mainly due to contractual obligations, employee benefits, and additional, we're providing funds for additional purchase of merchandise for resale. Their, their, the pro shop operations have increased in revenue, their revenues and increased their sales volume, so we're giving them additional money to help out with that revolving type activity. The Hyannis Youth and Community Center Enterprise Fund budget is down as a result of a reduction in debt service, as well as a one-time capital funding that we gave them in '18 for a used Zamboni that we're not repeating. So there's a slight reduction there. The PEG Enterprise Fund is up due to the reorganization as well as contractual obligations. We are shifting a portion of another, of a person into the PEG Enterprise Fund as they take a greater role in that area. And of course, the enterprise, the airport enterprise fund is down significantly mainly due to their, the revenue struggles that they're having out there. We've cut the budget across the board in many, many different line items. These are the reserves that we're going to use to fund the budget. We're using almost $3.6 million of general fund reserves to, for these purposes on this slide to balance the general fund operating budget. However, we believe we're going to generate a similar amount of reserves when we close fiscal year '18, based on how our revenues are trending and how our expenditures are trending. The solid waste enterprise fund will, will use $550,000 of reserves. This is the last year's payment for the landfill closure loan. It's been 25 years, I think, and the town manager was, was responsible for, for that project, a very successful project. I remember he was talking about that with us several times, and this is the last year we're paying that loan. He must be happy about that, I think. And so that will go away. So the balance will be used for fee mitigation. The water pollution control is using $345,000 for the capital program. The water supply enterprise fund will use almost a million dollars, 365 for the capital program, and again, 611,000 for fee mitigation. We have a multiple-year rate projection model that we're working with that will eliminate that amount of reserves that we have to use through a periodic rate increase to cover the capital program because of the, as you know, the infrastructure improvements that we've had to make, make there. The Sandy Neck Enterprise Fund will use $175,000 of their reserves, again, for the, reimburse the general fund and that sand replacement. And the golf enterprise fund will use some of their reserves for fee mitigation and their capital program. And the airport will use some of their, their reserves to fund their capital program as well as the operating budget. This, these are what our reserves levels look like. When we closed the fiscal year, last year we had about $77 million of reserves. We're projecting those to be about almost $80 million when we close this fiscal year. So again, we're maintaining strong reserve levels. We manage them prudently. We use them, but we also replenish them when we can. So we keep a close eye on these, and it's, again, one of your charges within your strategic plan is to maintain a sound financial position, and this helps us do so. So that completes my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for the presentation. Informative as always. If anyone has any kind of general 30,000-foot view comments or questions, I don't want to get into departments and funds and all down the weeds, which some of you tend to do before it's time. But if we keep it high level, any, any councilor questions? Was I looking at you, Councilor Flores? I'm sorry. Councilor Flores, go ahead.
I have a very simple question. With the reorganization and the restructuring of all the departments, did anyone lose a position? Okay. Thank you.
Slide over your way a bit. The answer is no, they didn't, but there are changes in positions. So that's all. And, and we were very mindful that anybody who might be impacted, that we plan so that they would have an opportunity to remain within the organization.
Good. Thank you.
Yes. Anyone else? Vice President Crocker?
Thank you. Obviously, we're adding another $4 million to the capital trust fund. We're not talking about any new property tax or override. The phrase we always like to talk about is new growth dollars. How do we do? What are you thinking is the forecast? And that certainly is what gets us to the finish line.
Yeah. We, we, we love new growth tax dollars, and it's, it's just, it's a good sign that the economy's humming along, as you know. And we're using $950,000 in this budget, which is about $110 million in property value. However, I think it's going to track better than that, and what that will result in is excess taxing capacity that will be available for the following year's budget.
Yes. As, as it gets flushed out as free cash because it's not anticipated income. Terrific. Terrific. New growth dollars, counselor.
Anyone else? All right. Well, thank you both very much, and we'll be talking in greater detail in the next couple meetings. Vice President Crocker, could you please read the motion for the operating budget items?
Yes. After a very stirring operating budget presentation, I'd make a motion to move FY19 operating budget to a public hearing. I move that the FY19 operating budget consisting of the town of Barnstable Council orders 2018-109 through 2018-137, as written, be moved to individual public hearings on each order number to be held on May 17, 2018.
All right. You heard the order. All those in favor of all these items going to public hearing on May 17? And that's unanimous. Great. I like that new thing we can do this year. It's a great, that's a great upgrade. Thank you to our town attorney for getting, getting that squared away. All right. So we're going to move into the end of new business. We have item 2018-141. It's right after, in your books, after the end of the FY19 operating budget orders. Counselor Neary, could you please read item 2018-141?
Yes, Mr. President. This is new business which may be acted upon. Item number 2018-141, the appropriation and transfer order of $150,000 to fund recyclables disposal at the solid waste division of the Department of Public Works, as written.
I have a second. And we have our Director of Public Works, Dan Santos. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. The town's current contract with New Bedford Waste Services for solid waste and recycling, transportation and disposal included zero-cost recycling through December 31, 2017. Barnstable was the only Cape town that had zero-cost recycling. The contract further states that recycling would be considered at the end of that period. During the past year, the national recycling market has undergone tremendous change, resulting in the consolidation and loss of markets and skyrocketing costs. Given these facts, the vendor has implemented a surcharge for the transportation and disposal of recyclables. Furthermore, they are unable to predict the cost of recyclables into the future due to the volatility of the markets. The current cost for disposal is $98.50 per ton plus transportation. Recycling is currently offered free to all Barnstable residents, not just transfer sticker purchasers. None of the above information was available or considered during the preparation of the FY18 operating budget for the solid waste division. The solid waste division has eliminated all discretionary spending in the current fiscal year and has left positions unfilled in order to cover the additional recycling costs. Unfortunately, these efforts will not result in adequate funds to cover the recycling costs for the remainder of the fiscal year. The division is seeking a transfer of funds from cash reserves to cover the recycling costs. There are adequate cash reserves to cover the funds transfer. Current certified cash reserves are $2.179 million. The FY19 operating budget does include funds for recyclables, as you heard a few moments ago from Director Milne, which was considered part of the FY19 solid waste rate structure. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. And could you just introduce your supervisor there?
PJ Kelleher, Division Supervisor for a Solid Waste. Is here tonight in case we have questions that I can't handle.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. Any councilor- All right. Thank you. Welcome. Any council questions on this? Counselor Rap Grissette?
Thank you, Mr. President. So next year, you're appropriating $135,000 for recycling? Is that what you've requested?
Yes.
So why is this so high to get you through the, this year?
The $135,000 was prediction when we created the budget, which was back in November.
Okay.
So it's quite possible, depending on things work out, that we'll be seeking supplemental increase during the fiscal year next year. But at this point, it's really difficult to tell what that would be.
And our stickers are going up to $250,000 this year from $240,000. My concern is, will that $10 increase continue to cover the recycling costs? And right now, those that pay for a sticker are subsidizing the recycling of those that don't. So is there any thought to charging those that currently recycle for nothing? They just need a sticker. They don't pay for that sticker. Is there any thoughts to charging for a recycle-only sticker?
Well, right now, I believe that it's by ordinance that recycling is free to all residents in the town. So I don't have the ability to charge them, at least in my operation, to have a charge for recycling. That would have to come through another process through your body.
So that might need an ordinance change to, to change it. Okay. Thank you.
Any other councillors? Counselor Hebert?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dan. We knew this day was going to come. And so if we look at, how much are we paying per ton for the solid waste?
$55. Well, it's actually gone up a little bit because of the increase, but it's a little less than $60.
So our determination, you know, from the state regulations of keeping recyclables out of the waste stream is going to be more difficult because it's easier to send it out at $55 a ton than the $98.50. Well, would we get consideration if we do more separation? So if we, we provide just cardboard, I'm seeing somebody shake their head, so. So I asked a question. If it's, if it's just going to be, if we separate it more for cardboard and more for clear glass, for instance, will we get a price consideration on that?
Okay. So we currently separate corrugated cardboard and we do actually make money on corrugated cardboard. We're not paying for that as we do for metal as well. Glass, there's zero market for. So there's really no benefit in separating out the glass.
Except?
And we've looked at, we've looked into all these, these options. Do we do it ourselves? Do we market it ourselves? There's, isn't a better option currently available? And even if we go to a source separation like we used to, the problem is, you know, when does it change back again? And it's a big effort to get people to change their habits and we go to source separation and then the prices go up and we go down and then we go back to single stream. And so I think we need to really see what the markets are going to do in more of a longer term than just a few months before we make significant changes like that to the operation.
So we know that the market crashed because when you co-mingle, you co-contaminate. So therefore China and other countries have said, no, thanks. We don't need your material anymore. So that problem is a reality. And so I think eventually, because the machinery that was designed to do the co-mingling has become too expensive and breaks down all the time and is downright dangerous and crazy. So I think it's going to go back the other way and I think that that's the future of the recycling. But if, if we look at the glass initiative, DEP has now approved glass crushing for use in construction, road beds, underneath sidewalks, all things that you know well about. And because we're looking at tremendous wastewater, construction and infrastructure within our communities, do you think there's a market that we can create even regionally between, you know, the DPWs of, let's say, Yarmouth, Dennis and, and Barnstable, that we could become marketers of that? Because that's, that's one of the heaviest items. When we have wine bottles going out. I'm going to be asking the state legislature to put a end-of-life use for wine bottles so that all of our towns can get five, 10 cents on a bottle. I'm not talking about return deposit. I'm just saying, somebody who's drinking lots of wine and it's breaking our backs financially now besides just carrying it around. So I'm going to ask for some kind of relief by the people who are using the glass bottles for wine and things like that. You know, I don't care if it's a nickel in each one, but it would be a way to help us to survive. $98 a ton, that's a lot of money. So I'd be willing to work with the town, town manager on this. And I've talked to other DPWs and, you know, everybody's kind of saying our back is up against the wall. There's not a market for it unless we create our own market here in Cape Cod. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other councillors? All those in favor of moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-141. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Counselor Lebec, could you please read item 2018-143? Thank you, Dan.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is under new business, may be acted upon. Item 2018-143. It's a transfer order of $261,475 for the fiscal year 2018 general fund operating budget.
I have a second. Oh, you're doing this?
Not so fast.
Okay.
Thank you. Employee turnover in the Public Works Department has resulted in an estimated salary savings of approximately $300,000 in the FY18 personnel budget. A portion of this savings is proposed to be utilized to fund other needed operating expenses and capital outlay that were not included in the approved FY18 budget. And I'll go through each of those now with a brief description. Mill pond fish run design completion. This project was originally envisioned as a repair project. However, over the cost of work to date, it has become apparent that a more substantive reconstruction will be required due to structural deficiencies and that it does not meet the latest design standards of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the Massachusetts Department of Marine Fisheries. Flagpole replacement. DPW is proposing to replace four failing or inoperable flagpoles. The locations are at Craigville Beach, Keys Memorial Beach, Calmas Beach and the West Barnstable Community Building. Blish Point repairs design. The Blish Point dune was significantly damaged in the severe storms of January through March of this year. This is an engineered sediment containment dune. The Town of Barnstable is responsible for maintaining and repairing the dune and keeping with Conservation Commission orders issued in 2015 and extended in 2018. And it is in the town's best interest to do so as the dune prevents the detrimental release of silty sediment into the harbor and the dune protects town and state infrastructure, including the bathhouse and parking areas from storm surges. Barnstable Police Department ceiling and lighting upgrades. The majority of the lighting and suspended ceiling systems in the building is original and dates back to 1980. This project would replace the ceiling grid and convert the existing lighting to LED technology in the lobby and first floor conference room. Cape Light Compact indicates that a portion of the lighting conversion will be covered under their municipal lighting program. Restore service, water service to Hollow recreational field. The Barnstable Hollow ball field located in Barnstable Village is in need of water service utility repairs. The main water service has broken under the paves entrance and will require a complete replacement. Fingerprint scanner for the Barnstable Police Department. The Police Department proposes to replace the cross-match live scan fingerprint scanner that is currently used for all fingerprint records completed at the Barnstable Police Department. This replacement is necessary as the existing system no longer functions properly or reliably transmits to the state police. The equipment is obsolete and cannot be repaired. Replace a patrol boat for Marine and Environmental Affairs. This request is to replace one of MEA's natural resources patrol boats with a new, larger patrol vessel, including an outboard motor and trailer. The current 1985 thirteen-foot Boston Whaler is difficult, is a difficult platform to perform all of its required functions. When performing regular duties in less than optimal weather and water conditions, the boat is difficult to safely maneuver and control. The new boat will enhance MEA's ability to safely patrol all coastal areas of the town. Additionally, the vessel will be able to provide for a higher level of visibility on the waterways as well as being able to assist in appropriate maritime responses for safety or emergency-related incidents. Boat retrofit for Marine Environmental Affairs. The town has nearly 200 permitted aids to navigation marking safe water for boaters. Every year, these aids are maintained, placed and hauled by Harbor Master staff. Presently, the staff is doing the work using a 1981 Boston Whaler. Due to its age and condition, this vessel is no longer safe to perform this type of work. Rather than purchase a new replacement boat, this request is to retrofit an existing 25-foot Parker patrol boat by installing a winch and pole system and adding protective components, which will enable the vessel to haul, place and maintain these aids to navigation. Color risograph machine for the Recreation Division. The Recreation Division produces extensive marketing and communications materials in-house. The current machine is beyond its useful life and frequently out of commission, resulting in the inability to produce materials in a timely manner. It has been determined that utilizing this machine to prepare these materials in-house is more cost-effective than outsourcing. And finally, replacement vehicle for Recreation. This funding will replace the 2002 Sonoma pickup truck, which is used for day-to-day operations for transportation around town and moving equipment to programs and beaches. The truck is 16 years old, rusted out, driver's side door no longer able to close properly. This vehicle provides the entire Recreation Division's non-participant transportation needs, including the moving of rescue boards, boats, buoys, program equipment, special event equipment and for all staffing transportation needs. This transfer order does not increase the overall FY18 general fund budget. The town manager recommends its approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council discussion, questions on this item? Counselor Flores?
On the Blish Point project, does it include the gazebo area where the entrance where it all caved in?
Yes. Yes, it does.
Thank you.
Any other councillors? All those in favor of moving the question? And that is unanimous. This is item 2018-143. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous. Thank you again. All right. Counselor Rap Grissette, could you please read item, item 2018-144?
Thank you, Mr. President. Under new business, item 2018-144. Appointments to a Board Committee or Commission resolved at the Town Council appoints the following individual to a multiple-member Board Committee or Commission. Planning Board, Patrick Foran from Barnstable as a regular member to a term expiring 6/30/2019.
Second.
President?
Second. Vice President Crocker?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd also ask that we suspend the rules tonight and vote this in. The Planning Board has a meeting on May 14th, again, tonight at our joint meeting. They had a quorum problem and I think if we suspend the rules, it would be appropriate so that they could meet on the 14th, which is before our very next meeting.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of suspending the rules on item 2018-144? That is unanimous. This is 2018, and Counselor Cullum is off the dais. Take note. This is item 2018-144. Appointments to a Board Committee or Commission. All those in favor of this item? And that is unanimous and that will take effect immediately. All right. So that ends the orders of the day. Our next regular meeting will be Thursday, May 17th, 2018. And we are going to go towards executive session. I declare that discussion of litigation strategy in open session with respect to potential litigation against manufacturers and distributors of prescription opioids may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the town.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, excuse me. I moved you up a start. I move we go into executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30, Subsection 21-3, to discuss litigation strategy with respect to potential litigation against manufacturers and distributors of prescription opioids based on the chair's declaration that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on a litigating position of the town and to reconvene in open session thereafter.
Not to reconvene.
They missed the "not" on my reading line. And to not reconvene in open session.
All right. I have a second, so we'll have a roll call.
Cullum?
Yes.
Dagwone?
Yes.
Flores?
Yes.
Rap Grissette?
Yes.
Hebert? Come out there. Lebec?
Yes.
Neary?
Yes.
Schnep?
Yes.
Stein Hilber? Tinsley?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Crocker?
Yes.
Mr. Hebert, okay. Eleven yes.
Thank you.